All right, go ahead and call this meeting to order. Stacy, can you go give this roll call, please?
Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry will be late to the meeting, and Mayor Gatewood. Can you turn on your microphone?
Here. Stacy, can you read the video recording and play by schedule, please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, November 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, November 7th at 6:00 p.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting on the city's website.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for, let's see who's getting hot potato. Steve, can I please have you come up and do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I bow to everyone to stay standing. If I can announce Jennifer Laird from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints to give the invocation.
Daringly, Father, we are grateful for this day, and we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in this wonderful city and to have the many great blessings which we have. And we are grateful for all those who actively engage in our community and who promote good works. And please bless us that we be able to do Thy will and that we be able to do the things that are good for our city and take us through the same safety and we say these things to my son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, presentations, my favorite. Stacy, can we have our first new introduction of employees? Mrs. Delaney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement and Investment Senior Management Analyst. And with me this evening is Randy K. Stevens. Randy K. joined the team on September 30th, and we're really excited to have her here. She comes from both a background of public service with another jurisdiction as well as the library system. She's also worked for some nonprofits, so she brings a lot of experience that is applicable to our world in the Community Enhancement and Investment Fund. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to her to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the city of Rancho Cordova and to the citizens of Rancho Cordova. I absolutely love working in local government and love giving back to communities and making things better. And I'm thrilled to be part of the Community Enhancement and Investment Team where we get to make a difference and bring really good things to the community. I've got a background, as Stacy mentioned, in nonprofit and local government service, and I'll bring all of my, you know, resources and attention to what I can offer here at the city and do a good job. And I appreciate being here and having this opportunity.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Randy.
All right, now, super excited about this. Cyrus, go on up there.
All right. That's okay, I'll remove my mask for just a second. Good evening, Council. I'm pleased to introduce our new Chief of Police, Captain Brandon Luke, who joined our team about a week ago to replace our Kate Adams, who recently retired. Chief Luke comes to us with 28 years of law enforcement experience, working with the Nevada State Troopers, with UC Davis as a police officer, and joined the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department in 1999. He has worked in a variety of responsibilities and jobs and has led and managed many exciting programs and projects. He has a passion for the youth. He has a passion in building relationships with the community, and that makes him a very good choice and good candidate for, to be our police chief. So with that, I welcome Chief Brandon Luke, and I would ask him to say a few things about himself.
Thank you, Cyrus. Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and City Councilmembers. It is a pleasure and an honor to stand here before you today in this assignment. I'm excited to join an already proven and demonstrated leadership team at the Rancho Cordova Police Department Sheriff's East Division, also to work alongside the men and women that have routinely served this community with the utmost professionalism. I look forward to meeting the community members, working with our business partners, establishing relationships and strengthening relationships with our faith base, and working with the other members of the community. Over this last week, I have been overwhelmed by the level of support from the many departments that make up the city, the community members, and I look forward to identifying new strategies and collaborative efforts to approach the different challenges that face the city. It's truly my honor and my pleasure to stand here before you today, so thank you.
Welcome, Chief.
All right, awesome. Citizens in tradition to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker's card to the city clerk. If you want to make public comment via teleconference, please use their raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press the star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or by telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items not on the agenda, speakers will be called upon, called by the mayor at the point and then the agenda when the agenda item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less, state the name and community of residence. Under provision of California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on anything not on the agenda unless it is demonstrated to be of emergency nature or need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Stacy, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, so we're gonna start with Helen Waylon Bishaw, who is in the council chambers with us this evening. Helen, you'll have up to three minutes to speak, and then I will move to Zoom and the telephone.
Hi, my name is Helen Waylon Bishaw. I live off of Rod Bodre, and I'm here to talk about my favorite subject, the horses. The two horses that reside on Folsom Boulevard. Cyrus, you were supposed to address my request for poop sacks or catch bags over a year ago. Haven't seen anything on the website. When we found out that that pedestrian easement or walking easement was only for people and not for horses, you so graciously gave us a sign that says, "No equestrians." But you don't reference a violation in the Rancho Cordova Code. So it's kinda like when you gave us our easements, but then when I requested information, it says they're gonna be abolished when the development goes in. So ever since I've been working over at Lisa's area, which is a house on Rod Bodre that it jasons to it, we've had to deal with the sheer harassment out of the horse owner. Well, ever since Lisa left, and she left because she was tired of the harassment of the horses and its owner, someone let Barbara know about it. Barbara goes up and down that easement all the time on her horses. I've called Russell numerous times, left messages. Now, because of the rains, they have created ruts. That bad rain we had has put grooves in it. It's hurting the levee that I mentioned is a levee on Rod Bodre. If I have to contact the Armin Corps of Engineers, send them all my documents, send them every time I've been to this council requesting something be done about the horses, then I will. Now we have motorcycles riding on that easement. Russell pretty much told me I can deal with it any way I want it. The problem is, anything I do, and Barbara, who's inadequate with riding the horse she is, falls off and injures herself, I could be liable for it. It shouldn't be that way. I think it's about time one member of our little community on that side of Rancho should not have so much freedom that the rules that you've put into place should apply to her. Just recently, when her and her riding buddy came by me, the riding buddy stops her horse, and I got it on the cellphone, and says, "Oh, I hope you have a good picture of me," laughs and keeps riding. So they know what they're doing is wrong. That is sheer harassment. I do not wanna lose the next neighbor that moves into that property because of the harassment that one member in my little community creates for all of us. I will put a sign on my fence that says, "Fisherman, you have a problem with the horse poop? Contact Barbara and put all her personal information on there. That is public information when you go Google it." Thank you.
The next speaker is by telephone, and that telephone number starts with 916-804. So I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, and if you'll introduce yourself, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hello, this is FISA Mobile in Lincoln Village.
Hi, FISA.
A friend of, hey, a friend of mine recently let me know to sign up to get my booster shot for COVID-19. And I found out something that was kind of a surprise to me. I've been hearing about booster vaccines for those that received Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. There are like maybe five different criteria where you can qualify. Some of the criteria being you need to be a senior or in a long-term care facility. But I found out that those who had the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, like I did, there are virtually zero criteria, other than you had your shot over two months ago. So I'm just calling to let the public know that if you had a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, you were a one-and-done, and you're, you can qualify for a booster shot right now, and you're allowed to mix and match. So you can go to a booster shot location, and if they don't have a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine in stock, that is fine. You can take a Pfizer or Moderna and sort of mix and match for your booster, and you don't need to be a senior. You don't need to have underlying conditions. Your only qualifier is that you had the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine two months or longer in the past. So I just wanted a call to inform the public of that, and then I wanted to ask that that information be posted to the city website because what I'm seeing right now, you know, it addresses the Pfizer and Moderna folks, but not anyone that had the J and J. So that's all I wanted to say for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, FISA.
Our next speaker is in the audience in the council chambers, Wayne Kaiser. If you'd like to come forward, you'll also have up to three minutes.
Thank you. I'm a 20-year resident of the area. That breaks down really into kind of three different modes. I commuted locally out of the area for several years for work. And I, it was a driving instructor and trained over 600 students in and about the local area. And as a retired person, I try, I travel now at different hours. So I've had a very wide spectrum of kind of what goes on on some of our streets. When the Columba Road meeting was held, no notice of a preliminary design was given. So nobody that I talked to was aware, if it existed, why wasn't it at a meeting? And if not, shouldn't the public be able to comment once that item is drafted? One of the specific items of concern is the two-lane modification is gonna end at the east end, way before Vehicle Drive, which is next to Sunrise Boulevard. In non-commute times, 60 miles an hour is a routine speed, and that's not at all close to the speed limit. If you have frustrated people that come out of the two-lane area and all of a sudden I now have four lanes to proceed eastward to Sunrise Boulevard, I think going over 60 miles an hour is gonna be a routine experience. I have people who pass me using the center turn lane. Now, if I'm doing 45 miles an hour, that's speeding. Speed limit's 40. So I do 45 just to try and keep everybody happy. They will pass me on the left in other lanes, 60, 70 miles an hour, no problem. So I think we need to get a grip on what it is going to be in that modification. Speed control has to be. One young child was killed in an intersection a couple of years ago. That's bound to happen again. If you have frustrated people coming out of a two-lane situation and are late and wanna hurl themselves towards Sunrise. It may be that we have to bite the bullet and have all the commuters that use that as a shortcut. Go out on Highway 50, take the off-ramp to go over to Sunrise and stay out of Columba. You can't have it kinda, sorta this way and that. Has to be one way or the other, and people are fed up with the way it is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have. I see no additional hands raised in Zoom or by telephone, and the city clerk's office did not receive any public comment via email before the cutoff time of 3 o'clock.
Excellent, thank you, Stacy. All right, we're gonna move on to council reports, and I'm gonna start with Siri.
Hey, thank you, Garrett. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I would like to take this time to talk about the shortage of bus drivers in both the Folsom-Cordova School District and the EGUSD School District. There are, myself, along with Councilmember Donald Terry, and Cyrus spoke to the EGUSD School District about the kids facing difficulties in the school district, about the shortage of buses. They're leaving home around 6:30 a.m., sometimes not able to get back home till 4, 5, or even 6:00 p.m. The buses have been showing up late to take kids and sometimes not at all. They've been switching buses and not telling the kids, and sometimes the kids are not knowing what to do. So they're facing a lot of hardships on this. And our kids being bused is one of the most important things for them to get to school and study and work hard, but just waiting in school to get somewhere is not acceptable. So we spoke to the school district, and the EGUSD board members assured us that they've been doing everything that they can to overcome the bus shortage. EGUSD has been trying to, you know, provide a higher wages for the bus drivers. They've been the only paid school bus driver training programs in this state. You know, they're trying to overcome many hurdles in order to get to this. They're having some issues with the union in order to make some, to get to next steps. They're in pass right now, and so they're trying to overcome that. But we are on top of it with both school districts to try to make that happen, and if the city can help in any way. So that's, that's a discussion that we had this week with the school district. And I would like to request, if you do know anybody who is looking for work, this is a great place. You know, we need bus drivers, just both school districts need a lot of help. So if you have time, if you want a good job, if you wanna secure our kids' future, please apply. Thank you.
Siri, Linda.
So, so I will report on our, first I will report on our most recent regional transit meeting, where exactly the same thing was an issue, Siri. Regional transit is having some service problems because of a lack of bus drivers. Everybody, and I have to tell you, I think FedEx is experiencing the same thing with their truck drivers, because I've got a pair of shoes that's been wandering around the United States for the last two weeks. So unfortunately, I think everybody is in the same position. And what I'm hearing from the kids is that the time they're spending on the school bus is not a quality time where they could actually get any, I mean, even if they wanted to, they couldn't get any homework done because the buses are crowded and very chaotic. And it's probably not a good thing for the bus driver, but it's also not, not productive for the kids because, especially the kids who have to go to Elk Grove and are spending hours on the bus a day. So it's really, it's really wasted time in their, in their day. So I, regional transit identifies with the problem. Totally understand. The only thing positive that we discussed the other night is the approval of a plan that Caltrans has required called a Network Integration Plan, which is trying to coordinate all of the statewide railroad and bus systems so that they can all work together efficiently. I would also tell you, as Donald would if he were here, that this last week, of course, was at the CAP, our Capital to Capital Program from the Metro Chamber. And in all the time that I have attended, this was really the most unusual, because it was done virtually. And like everything else, we do virtually today. It has some technical issues. I suspect there's a lot of positive that will come of it, but, but it might be of limited nature. The one presentation that I heard that I thought was most positive, because I really, I listened to a delegate-wide presentation on homelessness and found absolutely no information that would help us to get more money to build more affordable housing for veterans like, like Mather Veterans Village. See, no information that would enable us to be able to fund something like that in under the eight years that it took us to fund that original Phase 1 of Mather Veterans Village. But the gentleman who spoke that was most influential came to us from Doris Matsui, who has actually been a member of the Smithsonian Board of Directors for several decades, probably the entire time I've known her. And, and what I think was 2019, we all met the gentleman who is now the head of the Smithsonian. His name is Lonnie Bunch. And at that time, he was the first director of the brand-new African-American museum on the west end of the Mall. And he talked about all of the creative ways that museums and art galleries and so many organizations like that have been able to keep themselves alive and viable and important in everyday lives. Help people, help kids especially, be able to tour things online, keep their information levels up, to visit everything from, you know, everything from the National Air and Space Museum to the Louvre in Paris. And I know that our children's museum, I'm sure Donald would tell us if we were here, also developed programs that kids could take home, like a, you know, like a museum in a box, and have activities they could do at home. So this is definitely, this is one of those things where a negative circumstance has made people think more creatively and encourage them to really get outside of the four walls or, or the four fences that are around their facility and take things out to people. We did a two-by-two with Metro Fire, and we heard that they're, they're still working on a plan and funding to remodel and upgrade Station 61 on Folsom Boulevard, which is actually the legacy of the oldest fire station in the county. Having, the original port of, part of it was originally built in 1920. And they also say that in addition to the station that's being constructed at Motelena, that they're looking for another one on the west side of Grant Line, perhaps at Cordova Hills, but something that will, something that will serve all of the area in Rancho Cordova that is in the Kiefer and Sunrise and Lower Grant Line-Jackson area. So that's where their planning is going. And then the nice thing for our contractors and our business community is that Plan Check is coming back to the city on Monday, and they'll be here for three days a week as a starter. Tonight, we're gonna hear a presentation from the county about supervisory redistricting. It turns out, if you read your newsletter from SMUD in your bill, that SMUD is getting ready to do the same thing. And, and then the last thing I would ask, Garrett, is if we could please adjourn in the memory of a gentleman named Stanley Flood. Stanley Flood was the golf course superintendent at the Cordova Golf Course for what seems like decades, when Jim Marta was the pro at the golf course. And the two of them really basically were the face of the Cordova Golf Course and ran a wonderful institution, a small course or a short course, whatever, however you wanna term it. But it was a very lovely place and extremely popular. I can remember at some point, probably in the mid-'80s, it got to be so popular as a short course that they actually had to hire what was called a course marshal to make sure that people moved along at an appropriate rate and didn't just dawdle. I'd never heard of such a thing, but I'm not a golfer. So at any rate, I would ask that we would adjourn tonight in the memory of Stanley Flood.
All right. All right, perfect. All right, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, I've had multiple meetings this week with Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, talking about extracurricular activities and city funding for events and teams. Those are ongoing, but I would say the relationship is definitely on the upswing, and we have made some, some really exciting progress for our kids here in Rancho Cordova. I've also been really active with the, with CalCities, the League of California Cities. We did a retreat last week, and I was in a focus group on affordable housing. And we also had the responsibility of homelessness policy for the league. So this is the time of the year when the league reformulates its annual policies. The legislative season has ended. There will be a new one starting in January, and the league takes this time to sort of retrench, look at all the priorities, our accomplishments, our challenges, the cities, and push forward with, with new goals for the next year. So if any residents have ideas for what those goals ought to be for the league to work on, the league is pretty effective at altering legislation and moving legislation through the legislature, not as effective as all of us would love, but pretty effective. We are definitely open to comments, both from, from colleagues, from staff, and from residents. So please, please feel free to reach out to me on that. Similarly, there's a lot of work being done at TIS, which I chair for the National League of Cities. That's the Transportation Policy Group for the National League of Cities. Obviously, there are a couple of giant congressional actions sort of sitting there. We're not exactly sure on the timing. One is a major infrastructure bill. Well, actually, there's an infrastructure part of an infrastructure bill. Infrastructure's been redefined, so almost everything. But it's, it's a hot topic. If you wanna talk about roads, bridges, streets, that infrastructure, it is a sizable action on that, because there is a renewal going on this year. It happens about every five years, four, five years, six or seven years, depending where the, that bill is reauthorized. And they're in the middle of it. You've probably seen it on the, on the evening news, the conversations about it. So I had a lot of, a lot of effort going into NLC's management of that and as well as preparation of, in a similar way to CalCities, what our policies will be for next year. of, in a similar way to Cal Cities, what our policies will be for next year. And let's see, I want to talk a little bit about RCIA, Rancho Athletic Association. So interesting announcement, we have a rugby league in Rancho Cordova. And the funny thing is this, it built itself. So years ago, with support from the Sacramento Valley Rugby Foundation, we attempted to start a league here in Rancho Cordova, and we're not completely successful. We ended up with a league that occurred in Sacramento, but it did not have Rancho Cordova as a focus. But a bunch of enterprising parents from a church here in Rancho Cordova, at least a group built around a church, started a rugby league a couple of years ago and got themselves all certified with the national accrediting body and just now has made connections with that rugby foundation. And they want to grow more in Rancho Cordova because they're getting a lot of kids who want to play rugby who are approaching them, and they are ready to start up basically as an open league in Rancho Cordova. So we had talks with them last week about how they would join RCIA, what sort of facility needs they might have, and it is another great opportunity for kids in Rancho Cordova, which is really exciting. And we had some success this past week. I don't know who noticed it, but cross-country at Cordova High won their league. And so a bunch of boys and a bunch of girls there did absolutely outstanding work, and we have a league championship accrued at Cordova High School cross-country. So congratulations to all those athletes and to their coaches, head coaches Josh Grover. Those guys did great work, built a great team, and continue to have a ton of success. So we look forward to that translating into our track season and other sports as well at Cordova, but congratulations to them for that.
David, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I know that, I am aware that that information also has gotten out among the student body, and it just gives them another opportunity to feel proud of their school.
Absolutely. I mean, it's not just the achievement of the kids, and it's the pride of community and the pride of the of the school at stake, right? This is inspirational stuff.
Yeah, this is good.
All right, of course.
That's my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Go Lancers. We're number one. Next up, let's talk, I'll do mine. So I met with the Sacramento Library Board. They're one of the ones we're trying to get a library of Rancho Cordova's own that's going to be in the region. I spent three days interviewing people, which is not an easy task, but it's hours and hours and hours of interviews on the find a replacement for RIVCA. As Linda Falwell knows, there's no actual replacement for RIVCA. She's amazing. But we did have three individuals, and the individual that I don't know if I'm allowed to say who won yet, I think it's out. But this individual will be moving to the city of Sacramento. He actually, the most interesting part was I told him, we were in the process of his interview, and he was meeting with the entire council, and I said, hey, don't forget to hold up your card. So when he came, he grew up in a very poor family, and so the only place he could go when he was growing up, when he was little, he lived in an apartment, was to get to Sacramento to get his library card. So he had his original card that he got when he was very little in Sacramento and held it up to show everybody, because that was his pride and joy, and that's how he started his whole walk with the library. And so I thought that was real touching, that someone was from the Sacramento area that got his first library card in Sacramento is now coming home to run the library commission. So great individual.
That's adorable. What a wonderful story, Garrett.
Right. And it's interesting because he basically, he's like, I can't wait to come home to where I grew up. And so if you could, if, this is just legacies of individuals that through years of doing stuff are coming back to the city and the region to be able to help out. So amazing, amazing. Then we met with the Fire Metro Fire. Fires, of course, are down in our area. I asked about the, if, they had some numbers and stats on the, how the fireworks Task Force went in putting out fires, and they said fires overall are down in the city of Rancho Cordova. And they had other statistics with it. So it's good to hear that, you know, the policies are starting to work and our citizens are getting safer by the moment. And that's it for me. And I will hand off to, oh, big thanks to my soccer team that whipped on everyone that came down from Marysville, but that's Rancho Pride. Oh, is Donald here? Donald, if you can, jump on and do your report.
I'm Garrett. Garrett, before you get this started, you know, they gave us that sheet, and we should ask Maria to share that stat sheet with the council.
Yeah, that would be good. And then maybe we can even put it online so the citizens can see it, too.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that, Donald. Go ahead.
And I'm traveling for work, so I don't have my camera on at the moment. I'll be pretty brief. I think, Linda, you might have mentioned something about CAP-to-CAP. So I again chaired the community, or I was a team lead for the Community Resources Team, which was focused on homeless and housing. So CAP-to-CAP was virtual this year. It was all of last week. I want to thank Jen Covino and her team at Simon &amp; Company because they staffed our team. And so unlike a lot of the other Metro Chamber committees for CAP-to-CAP that use the chamber staff to schedule their meetings, we use our city lobbyists in DC to do that. We had, I think, seventeen meetings in total last week, met with most of our congressional delegation in the region, including both senators' staff. We met with Carson McNerney and Albera, along with Garamendi, the National Coalition in Homelessness, the National Affordable Housing Coalition. On Wednesday, we held an all-delegation forum that included Luke McGowan, who's a senior White House advisor, who reports to Gene Spurling, who is the former chairman of the Economic Council for Clinton and Obama, and is now overseeing the ARBA funding program. We also had the regional director for the Interagency on Homelessness and the senior deputy director of HUDD to speak about, mainly to speak about American Rescue Act and also some of the details as they were at the time of the Go Back Better Plan, which at current includes the largest increases in housing vouchers, loan housing trust fund, and public housing in the last fifty years, even the new levels that they're talking about. But most of our time was spent advocating for the passage of that act and what kind of impact that would have locally on our affordable housing programs and our homeless services. We also had a really great conversation with the VA on the final day, and I know we have a meeting coming up with the director of the VA Hospital here pretty soon. But there were some pretty interesting conversations around some technical assistance funding that a few hospitals will get to assist with navigator services for homeless vets in the region. And one thing that came up in that conversation that I wanted to share with the council was, I don't have a number in front of me, it was either mid-500s or mid-600s was the point-in-time count of veterans in the county. And it's interesting to think that, if you think of the scale of Veterans Village at 150 units, and one of the things that we talk a lot about when you talk about homelessness and housing is this goal of getting to what's called a functional zero. So it's not actually, did you get every person in that sector, you know, off the street? The idea of what's considered functional zero is you have enough beds to house a given population. And so a lot of people talk about Salt Lake City as being one of the first places to ever like solve homelessness for veterans. What they really did was they achieved a functional zero, and it's because, one, they had like ninety-eight homeless veterans, and they built a hundred units to house veterans. So it's just kind of interesting to look at a county of our size and actually say, in our city, we have 150 units of veteran housing, and that's, you know, getting close to, you know, what is it, one-fifth of the need of a given population. And to just imagine that, you know, if there was some way to work with the region to have five or six hundred units identified for veterans, we would consider that to have solved the homelessness within our county. And it's actually, to me, it seems like a doable number comparatively to, you know, the 11,000 people that entered homelessness in 2020, and the region only housed 3,600 of those people. But if you look at, you know, starting with a lower number and actually trying to achieve it, and looking at what our city and the county and the VA have been able to accomplish for Veterans Village, that really is a big chunk of the need at the current time. So more to come on that, but yeah, I think when we meet with the VA, we should stress to them our interest in them applying for the technical assistance navigator program. It sounds like they're like a month or two away from getting it, and there's only going to be maybe five sites in the whole country that are going to get it. But I think with what we've been doing with the VA here, I think we stand a very good chance of helping them get some additional funding. And with that, and just getting done with the other meeting that I just ran from to get to here, I'll leave it at that for now.
Excellent. Thank you, Donald. Hardest-working guy in the council. Let me go ahead and hear from Cyrus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items. Just wanted to remind the public that we have our State of the City address scheduled for this Wednesday, November 3rd, and it will be here at the City Hall in the American River Room. So just a reminder to please attend, we will be hearing from the mayor about the accomplishments that we have had over the course of the last year. Also, wanted to point out that you may have heard that the American River Bank was acquired by Bank of Marine. Vice Mayor Donald Terry, Michael Renner, and I had an opportunity to meet with their CEO, Tim Myers, who took, actually, he's an incoming new CEO that took reigns today at the bank. They did emphasize that they want to be a community bank, that they want to invest, not only invest in the community, but also be involved in the community. So we look forward to that partnership, and we talked about ways that they can be a good partner to the community and to the city. Lastly, I wanted to also remind you that November 11th is Veterans Day. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we're not able to hold the events and the gatherings that we've had in the past. We will have flags on our streets and remembering and honoring our veterans. Please be sure to thank our veterans for the service they have given us, and also reminded that the City Hall will be closed on that day in honor of Veterans Day. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to get situated, and we're going to go on to Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar, our items deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless the members of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items may be approved in one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull on the Consent Calendar items?
Hearing none, Garrett.
Wait, wait, hold on one second, one second, one second. Stacy, is there any public comment related to the Consent Calendar?
Well, my computer just shut off.
Excellent. I heard it shut down. So we're going to hold one second, and we're all going to pretend that Windows isn't updating to 11 as we speak.
That's a first.
Here comes our IT guy. He's coming, he's coming.
Gary, did you have a comment? Gary, did you have a comment?
No.
What is that, Garrett? About a three-hour wait for a Windows upgrade?
To Windows 11? Yeah, she should be, oh, the computer's actually dead. It's dying. She's plugging it in.
I don't think we hand up other than.
I think Persephone is hosting now, so. Yeah, that's what it said.
She can't see.
There's no comments? Okay. Excellent. No comments? All right.
No comments? Okay. In hearing none, I will move approval of items 9.1 through 9.10.
Second.
Roll call, Persephone.
I got it.
Oh, you got this. All right, Stacy.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander? Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. All right. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items may be approved with one motion. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing item and ask Persephone. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
We don't have any public comment.
Excellent. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing item and ask the council, is there any items you wish to push or pull, excuse me, push? Wonderful.
Hearing none, I will move approval of items 10.1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Excellent. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander? Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. All right. Is your computer back up?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. I'm going to ask Stacy to announce the subject. We're on to regular calendar, calendar here, items.
12.1, Implementation Alternatives for Residential Organic Waste Collection Program.
Steve Albert enthral us with garbage. I'm going to half-bite myself for that one.
Compost.
Talking trash.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and members of the council. I'm Steve Harriman with the Department of Public Works. With me tonight is William Schoen and Carrie Baxter with R3 Consulting Group. Also, Anna Roulan with Republic Services is in the council chamber, and I believe Tony Perez and Colin Wallace are joining us via Zoom. So we are here tonight to talk about the Residential Organic Waste Program. And our presentation outline tonight, we're going to give an overview of SB 1383, which is the legislation that is requiring organics recycling. We're going to review the current contract with the Republic Services for residential waste collection and recycling programs. We're going to present two rate options to the council for an amendment to the Republic Services contract for the implementation of the Residential Organics Program. And we're going to ask council tonight to give us direction on the preferred option. And then we are going to return to council at some time in the future with a resolution that's going to allow the city manager to execute an amendment to our contract with Republic Services. So this is sort of telling the story of organic waste in California. We in California, and actually, this date is a couple of years old, it's actually a little bit higher now, but California at that time generated 20 to 23 million tons of organic waste per year. That's about two-thirds of the total waste stream in the state of California, and that's comprised of things like paper, lumber, other organics, food, edible food. And this is also at a time when we are throwing away almost six million tons a year of edible food. And we also have many Californians that live in a situation where they are food insecure. And the primary issue is that when organic waste goes to landfill disposal, it decomposes in an anaerobic environment, and it generates methane gas. And methane is a very potent greenhouse gas, much more potent than carbon dioxide. So, and we are certainly experiencing the results of climate change in California with wildfires, drought, heat waves, reduced snowpack. So in 2016, SB 1383 was signed into law, and the legislature basically took a very strong position that they would like organic waste in California to not go to landfill disposal and to be diverted from the landfill and recycled. And so the law states that we would be recycling 75% of the organic waste in California by 2025, and this would mean that 20 million tons or more of organic waste by 2025 could not go to the landfill. And SB 1383 has a number of requirements on local governments. First is provide organics collection services to all residents and businesses. And of course, we're here tonight to talk about collection service for residents. service for residents. We are also required to establish an edible food recovery program, and we have started that project. We need to conduct education and outreach. We need to procure recyclable and recovered organic products that we would use in the city to create a market for those materials. We need to secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity. So we need to do some capacity planning and facility planning. And then finally, monitor compliance and do enforcement for residential and commercial generators. And in the law, it stipulates the penalties of $10,000 per day for noncompliance with these requirements. So I want to switch gears a little bit. And I just want to give a quick background of our contract with the public services. I think that two of our members of our city council were not on the council when we approved the current contract. Our current contract with Republic started on January 1 of 2018, and it expires at the end of 2024. Our monthly rates for waste collection services adjust annually on July 1, and it's based upon CPI. And there's a floor of 2% and a ceiling of 3%. So every year, we have a a small rate adjustment on those rates. And the current services include trash recycling and yard waste collection. We have a bulky item program, and illegal dumping collection, public education, street sweeping. Republic provides waste collection and recycling for all city facilities and most city events. And then finally, we do curbside collection of batteries, oil, oil filters, and sharps through that contract. This is our current rates. And so the rate that the customer pays is dependent upon the size of the trash can. We offer three different trash cans, 32, 64, and 96. And the current rate for street sweeping is a dollar. So on the second column there, it shows our current rates. About two thirds of our customers are in a in the 64 gallon garbage can, which is the middle size of the garbage can. The total revenue in this contract last fiscal year was almost 6.5 million. That includes a 10% franchise fee that is paid back to the city. So last year, we got $682,000 in franchise fees. We also receive $450,000 a year for our road rehabilitation program and $50,000 annually for consulting services. So through this contract, last fiscal year, the city got back almost 1.2 million. So the proposed organics program to comply with SB 1383, which is going to start midyear this this year, 20, sorry, next year, July 2022, we're basically going to rename the green waste can or the yard clippings can, the organics can. And we are going to ask residents to put their yard clippings, their food waste, food scraps, and food soiled paper. And those are all items that are required under the law into that organics can. Because of the materials that are going to be going into that can, it will be collected every week, as opposed to right now, it's collected every other week. So after the program is implemented, garbage and organics would be collected every week, and then the recycling can would be alternated every other week. And the new program.
I have a quick question on that. Sorry, really, on the previous slide. What is what is new on this? I mean, isn't that what we always had? We had yard clippings. People would put food waste in it?
Yeah, great question. The difference is, is that the the second two items, the food waste and the food soiled paper, up to this point have have gone into the garbage can. So we're taking those items, basically, and not putting them in the garbage can anymore, and we're putting them in the organics can.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And the the costs associated with the new program, of course, there there's going to be additional collection vehicles and drivers. We have some additional staffing with a route auditor and a reporting staff, which again are required by the law. Expanded customer service and outreach. Also, a kitchen pail. And I brought one here to show everybody. And basically, every one of our residential customers would receive a pail.
I don't think they'll see it.
Oh, it won't show. And we will ask residents to put their food scraps into that pail and then use that to carry it out and put it into their organics can. And then finally, additional.
Okay, I can't see it. But sorry, really, it's really quick. I can't see it. But that does that kitchen deal have a lid?
It does.
Yes.
And the mayor is going to.
Show it?
He's gonna.
As the one person that does, I don't know the others, but I do compost. So I'm like really asking questions that would be useful. I can see it now. Yes.
You're not the only one, Gary.
I know. I know. I'm like.
I already have my pail. I've had it for years.
I don't have a pail. I do other stuff.
No, no, I'm supporting this.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Do you have earthworms too, Donald?
She asked if you had earthworms.
I have one of those thing barrels that you roll that's up on a stand. But there's lots of worms that get in there. Yeah, sure.
I have lots of worms in my compost pile, but none, not an official like earthworm composting thing.
Right.
Oh, Stephanie Snyder did. Remember?
She did. That's right. So anyway, so so part of our our cost proposal we're presenting tonight includes a pail that would go to each household so that residents would have a much easier time of gathering their organic waste within their home and then carrying it outside to their organics can. And then finally, additional processing costs for mixed organics. Can I do it? So we have been negotiating for for many months with Republic Services. And I want to thank Republic Services for responding to all of our inquiries and engaging in some some long negotiation sessions. But basically, we started in August of 2020. And the the original proposal that we had received from Republic was a 38.6% increase. With the help of R3 Consulting Group and a lot of good work, we were were presenting two options tonight. Option one is we're calling the base proposal, which would be a 24.1% increase. Option two would be a reduced franchise fee, and that would be a 21.5% increase. So this shows basically a summary of option one. And this is the 24.1% increase. And we would have then a rate increase of 559, 665, and 885 for the 32, 64, and 96 gallon containers. This would be the rate that would go into effect on July 1 of 22. So this also includes the 3% annual rate adjustment that would happen anyway on July 1 of 22. This option leaves the franchise fees at 10%. And this actually would increase our franchise fees a little bit from about 682,000 to 781,000 next fiscal year. So that would be about a $99,000 increase in franchise fees through option one. Option two is reducing our franchise fees from 10% to 8%. And that brings down the the rate increase slightly. Again, these rates include the 3% adjustment on July 1, as and then the for the combined rate adjustment of 21 and 1/2. This would actually reduce our franchise fees a little bit from 682,000 to 611,000. So this would be a net reduction of franchise fees of about $71,000. And this just shows a summary of of the two options. Then we have the the trash can sizes, the current rates that are in that are in effect this fiscal year. It shows the option one rates, the option two rates. And then the final column there shows the savings if we were to select option two. So for the majority of our customers in the 64 gallon garbage can, they would, there would be a 72 cent savings if we selected option two versus option one. And then again, on the bottom there, it just shows the there's a 24.1% overall increase with option one and a 21 and 1/2% increase with option two.
So let me. So for us, option one, for the 64 gallon, it's seven bucks. And option two, it's six bucks? Is that about right?
So if we go back, this one, let's go back to this slide here. So for option one for the 64 gallon customers, and maybe I can point here. Yeah, it'd be $6.65 would be the increase for the 64 gallon customers under option one. And on option two.
So so can I can I ask that a different way?
Sure.
So so you're asking, do we want the cut? Do we want our residents to pay for the whole thing? Or are we willing to chip in some of our of the money that goes back to our general fund? Right? And keep their their bill a little lower?
I think that's a good way to say it.
That's essentially what it is.
Yes.
Yeah, either the the customer bears the entire cost, or we're going to take some of the costs from our franchise fee, which goes to the general fund, and chip that in to keep their bills lower.
Right. So and just I guess another way to say it. So option one raises our franchise fee a little bit by $99,000. Option two ends up reducing our franchise fees a little bit by $71,000. So we, you know.
Yeah.
We were sort of trying to aim at a revenue neutral option.
Yeah, to me, I would be more concerned about keeping the bill low for our customers. We've had our residents, we've had our residents trust us with significant amounts of new tax revenue in the last six years. And I think that the city can bear the brunt of some of that. I'd want to keep their bills as low as as we can, considering what what additional work this is going to be. So that's just my two cents. I would go with the one that keeps customer bills lower.
Okay. Okay.
So so Garrett, I I agree with Steve, with.
Hey, really quick, guys. Do you let's get Steve, how far you got?
I got two more slides.
Okay, can we get through the two slides? I take some public comment, and then I'll roll back us all back together again.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. So anyway, this one just shows the summary, and we went through that. This one shows a regional rate comparison. And we are, this is showing in the in the orange box, option one and option two. And you will see, everybody is looking at quite significant rate increases for the organics program. But on a regional basis, actually, we're we are comparing well. And then this is my final slide. So so we're asking for direction tonight on option one versus option two. We are going to come back at some point with, we're going to do a Proposition 218 notice and public hearing for these rates. And then we would come back in early 2022 at some point with, again, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to our Republic contract to incorporate the organics program and the new rates. We have a significant public education and outreach campaign, and Maria and her team have started helping us to work on that. And then July of 22, the the program would start citywide. So that concludes my presentation. Excellent.
Do I have any public comment?
We have a couple of public comments. The first is Darryl Langwell, who is in the council chambers.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and council members, Darryl Langwell, Vineyards Neighborhood. If all of this stuff is just going to be dumped into these containers, just straight there without being in some sort of plastic bag or something, did they take into consideration what Rancho Cordova is going to smell like in 90 and 100 degree weather in the summer? Because that can be quite odiferous. The winter's not so bad, but with that heat, it doesn't take this stuff long to start decomposing and creating quite an odor.
Steve?
So I I agree. He's absolutely right. And and we will be offering residents an option. So residents would be able to line their container with a plastic bag, and then the plastic bag would go into the organics container. And that would add some processing on on the other end. But the processing fee that we have worked out with Republic includes the plastic bag. Or if you don't want to use a plastic bag and want to use it directly, you can do that as well. So so residents would have the option to do either one.
Yeah, but the plastic bag won't go into the organic box or whatever, right?
Yeah. So the plastic bag would go into the organics cart. The challenge for Republic, then, is when they process the material, getting those bags out and separating the material, the 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 plastic from the food waste. And, you know, these these programs are going in all across the state. Everybody is basically at the same spot where we are. And it seems to be that that most communities are offering a plastic bag option. But it does add expense and logistical issues on the other side. There's no question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
In telephone, I'm going to go to caller 804. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, FISA in Lincoln Village. I have a couple of questions. My first question is, will this be rolled out to people in multifamily setting? My second question is, are we going to do extensive outreach to communities whose primary language is not English? And I ask that because we have several areas or census tracts in our city where we have a significantly high proportion of linguistically isolated people. And I would like for there to be more people on board. Personally, my measure of program success isn't going to be measured by white resident buy-in, but like everyone's buy-in. So we can't just be targeting maybe 40 or 50% of a population. But I would like everybody to be educated about these programs. Thirdly, I lost track. I have three questions in mind. I can't remember the third one. So maybe I'll circle back to staff and ask it when I remember. But thank you for letting me speak.
So do we have an outreach program for people that are English second learners or, you know, lower socioeconomic groups? What do we got?
Yeah, absolutely. And let me ask answer FISA's first question, which was about multifamily. So the Republic Services residential contract includes everything up to a fourplex. So a single family duplex, triplex, and fourplex. And so this program that we're discussing tonight would include everybody up to a fourplex. All properties that are five units or above fall into our commercial side of the solid waste industry. And we are currently working on implementation of organics with businesses and multifamily. And the law says multifamily has to be in by July 1 of 22.
January 1.
Excuse me, January, January 1 of 2022. So we're actually in the process of working with the waste haulers on the on the multifamily side. The second question about public education is is a great question, you know, and this is a major paradigm shift for most people. Most people understand recycling as bottles and cans and paper. And we've been talking about that for a long time. The idea of organic waste as a resource and something to be recycled is a very new concept for a lot of people. And it, you know, nothing, in my view, is more critical than public education. And we will certainly make it make information available in multiple languages. We're working, looking at doing a series of videos that will be very graphic in nature so that it would be easy to understand for for folks of all different backgrounds and languages. And a lot of the edu, public education materials that we generate will also be very graphic in nature. So we are going to be working hard on the public education side.
Excellent. Stacy, anybody else?
The next public comment is Angel Ball. Following Angel Ball will be Tara Kovambach.
Go ahead, Angel.
Hi, good evening. I have a couple of questions. First one is on the franchise fee. I understand the amount of money that you described this evening, and I learned that it goes into the general fund. But what is the money used for? Second is, why are the rates on the garbage can not the green can? Second is, why are the rates on the garbage can, not the green can? Third, I don't know what CPI means. And the fourth question is, are, will there be an option that we can take our organic waste somewhere? And then I just wanted to make a comment on education. Like, the education to be more focused on what's good for the earth, and that we all have a responsibility to take care of it. Um, possibly breaking down the food waste into a family size instead of saying we have a ton of food waste. If we could figure out a way of breaking it down to where it's relatable to a family, possibly the amount of money, um, that would be saved by not, uh, wasting food or throwing food away. And, um, just stay away from, you know, it's the law and we have to do it, but try and take an approach that, um, everybody can see why it would benefit us, the soil, the air, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah, so the first question was, uh, on franchise fees, and in the franchise fees, my understanding is it funds the Public Works operating budget, uh, which funds different types of, of, uh, Public Works programs and services. Uh, the intent, of course, is that it helps to support the solid waste program. So as a city, we have a solid waste program that requires, uh, accounting and legal work, and we pave roads that are impacted by trucks. And so there's just, there's a variety of services and impacts related to our solid waste program. Uh, and certainly the intent is that our franchise fees, uh, cover those expenses, consulting, uh, as well. Um, so that's what we do with the franchise fees. Um, I, I didn't quite understand the question about the rates. The question was, why are, why is the rate associated with the size of the garbage can, I think, and not the size of the green waste can? Um, and I think the simplest answer to that is we-
Steve? Steve, I can answer that for you.
Okay. Go ahead.
If you look at, if you look at your, if you look at your public bill, you look at your public bill, um, your bill based on the size of your trash cart. So that's why your, um, your charts that show the thirty-two and sixty-four and ninety-five gallon, uh, uh, garbage cans are so important because, um, we're all based, we're all based on whatever size our initial garbage can is. So like, in our case, we're thirty-two, thirty-five gallons, one lift per week, it says. So what this does was actually give us, um, an opportunity to, um, to recycle more, or, or to, to take more out of the initial trash can, put it into the organic waste can, or the recycle bin where it belongs. And then, a- and that would leave room to, to reduce the size of the trash cart. So there's two opportunities for savings in there.
Yeah, I, I would also add a lot, I didn't realize this when I first moved into the city, but you also, you don't get charged extra, first off, the, the bins for green and recycling are the big ones, and you don't get charged extra for those?
No, you don't.
And you, and you can get one extra of one of them. So we have two recycling bins and one green, and there's no upcharge for that. The only upcharge is when, is when you have a larger trash can. So again, you know, Angel, to your point, and, and to your question, we don't upcharge for more green waste, right? And to Linda's point, if you put more of this stuff in there, odds are, even if we're looking at these rates and they're gonna go up, if you switch down to a smaller trash can, you may end up saving money through all of this.
Yeah.
So, and personally, I can tell, I, I know Darryl asked the question, I would just say that I've been composting for a few years now. Um, and yeah, in the summer, the, it can smell, but trash cans in general smell in the summer. Uh, whether the stuff's in a bag or not. And my family, for a long time, has been putting food waste and, you know, when we have apples that have turned or whatever, those all go in our green waste that they have for years. And it's, it, it, you know, trap, the, on trash day in the summer, on the street, it's gonna smell a little bit. Um, but this isn't something that turns into some rotting, festering thing, you know, within a few days. I mean, it's, it, it really isn't, and if, if somebody keeps the lid on it, you know, I will say, I probably wash out my green waste bin and my trash can every few months anyways. It, it, this is not the end of the world, doing this.
I'm with Donald and Siri's, uh, Siri's original comment. I've never understood the, the difference between, um, lawn clippings from the lawnmower and a corn husk. It, it's all organic.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only difference is, you might get a little bit more garlic in, in what's on your plate than what, you know, comes out of. But yeah, for the most part, I mean, green waste, green waste. I mean, you, you leave, you know, wet leaves in a pile, they'll smell after a week, too.
They do.
Just about anything rots, so this, this isn't, to me, this isn't, uh, uh, that's not a big concern for me. But I do, I do agree with some of the speakers around outreach and education, especially for, uh, people that, you know, uh, that don't speak English as a first language, and that it's gonna be really important to make sure that people understand. And understand, again, Linda, to your point, the opportunity here of getting this stuff out of your trash can and saving money by going to a smaller can. I know for years, we were in the smallest can. My father moved in with us, we had one more kid, and then all of a sudden, we're in the middle can. I'm really trying to get back to getting to the small can. Um, and that's a family of four. And, and it, it's doable if you're not putting the stuff that you're not supposed to be putting in the trash, uh, in there.
So I realize we're hijacking your meeting.
Yeah, sorry, I'm excited about the subject.
Um, but, but to, to the point about, number one, we, we hope that the majority of what we do in Rancho Cordoba is, um, available to people who speak multiple languages, just like it is if you are trying to pay your smud bill or something like that. But I will tell you that it may be other countries where this kind of recycling has been routine for a long time. When I was in Japan with that study mission in two thousand nine, and down in, um, Totori Prefecture, they, all the, the little neighborhoods in there where they had their, um, um, and I think I, well, David would be the only one who would remember. But, um, when I talk to you about being down there and living with this couple over, this family over the weekend, every little neighborhood had its own little trash, uh, uh, depository area. And there was always an area for organic waste, which the Japanese government has been required to be recycled for years. So there may be other countries like that who have the same, who have similar practices. And for a lot of people, it may not be that, um, that unique.
All right, well, you had tons of public comment, a council comment.
We have, we have additional public comments.
Oh, we still got more? Okay, let's keep going.
All right.
Oh, yeah, keep going.
I think there were two more.
Hit the last two questions, I'm sorry.
Those were quick. Uh, the, the callers, uh, I think third question was, uh, what is the Consumer Price Index? And the Consumer Price Index is a, is a measure of prices for goods and services, uh, that are, um, reflected in our economy. And so in a good economy, the CPI goes up, in a poor economy, the CPI, uh, goes down. And so, we adjust the price, our rates based upon a measurement of the CPI. And I, I, I think that answers the question. The final question was around self-haul, and would there be opportunities for residents, uh, to self-haul their organics? Uh, and, and there aren't really, uh, there are very few facility options. In fact, at least in the short term, we're gonna be looking at long hauling some of this mixed organics material to, uh, other counties, uh, for processing. And there certainly are not, um, local facilities that are, uh, accepting food waste at the moment. So, uh, there are, there are not good opportunities for self-hauling.
Okay, excellent. All right.
Our next speaker is Tara Colvin-Bach. Tara, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Go ahead.
Hi, uh, hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, okay. So at first, I was thinking, where am I gonna put all these cans? It was like, I think there might be a misinterpretation where there is going to be an additional can, but that's not true. It's the yard waste is gonna be collected, uh, every week instead of every two weeks. Is that, am I understanding that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, are we going to also encourage people to compost, if they can, in their own yards? Because that is really good, uh, because then they can use that in their gardens or whatever, their eggshells, all the other things that, coffee grounds, it's really good for the soil. So are we doing that, too, something like that about doing composting, or are we not gonna even address that?
Uh, no, we actually currently do have a backyard compost program, and, uh, Republic offers several courses a year and offers, uh, free backyard compost, uh, bins. Um, before the pandemic, those classes were at Soilborne Farms, and I think there are, there are virtual classes now. But absolutely, backyard composting is a great option. Uh, not all of the materials that come out of your yard or your house are really great in a backyard compost pile. So, uh, all the materials that we really want to try to capture through this program, you know, you, I think you need to partner it with a collection program as well. Um, but absolutely, backyard composting is a, is a great option. All right.
Okay, and so, um, for, uh, uh, the smell, you know, you, if you put it in the garbage or you put it in the yard waste, that's gonna be the recyclable for, uh, yard, uh, for, um, compost kind of, i- it, things. I can't even talk. Anyway, it, the smell will be somewhere. But, I mean, if we are gonna provide bags or something for them, is there some kind of disposable, plastic kind of bag that they could use within the yard waste if they want? I mean, 'cause like, what Siri was saying about the smell, um, and having a smaller thing where you would put like your, uh, uh, the, if, from that little container that you're giving everyone, you know, to put it in some kind of bag or something to put it in to the yard waste? Is that, i- is that what really is gonna happen, or how will that work?
So the intent is that res-, each resident would have a choice, and if a resident chooses to use a plastic bag within their container, uh, if they, if they feel that's a, a cleaner and better way to do it, that's, that's perfectly fine. We are not planning to distribute bags to residents. It'd be up to the resident, but any plastic bag, any produce bag that you get at the grocery store or whatever, you could, you know, you could line that container with it. Um, and it also is true, you know, we're, there's no additional cans, and we're taking material that was in the garbage can, and we're just moving it over a couple of feet and putting it in the green waste can. So I don't anticipate a, an incremental increase in odor issues. Okay?
And it'll be collected once a week, instead of every two weeks, which is much better than the way it is now with the green can.
So, so in the interest of sustainability, though, I would not recommend, since you're starting this program, to allow the plastic to go into, uh, these organic bins? I mean, we can take that one additional step and put that plastic bag into garbage. So I think when we're starting off, let's not start with putting plastic into organic and creating an additional step.
Thank you, Siri.
All right, any next question?
Mayor Gatewood, we have a caller, um, eight-zero-four, uh, who is raising their hand again. Fiza, I don't know if this is you, but-
That should be Fiza. Fiza, go ahead.
Hello, it's me, and I don't want to take up time, uh, Fiza in Lincoln Village, but I just wanted to throw in that third question, 'cause it came back to me. Uh, Roseville's actually in phase two of a pilot program, um, running, you know, testing this program out. And I wanted to know if we had plans, or, uh, Steve mentioned working with multifamily, if there's actually something ongoing right now, uh, where we are pilot testing this program. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you. Steve?
I'm sorry, the question was, Roseville is pilot testing the, or-
Have we worked with Roseville, have we talked to Roseville about, have we heard about their pilot programs since we're in phase two?
Uh, I have not spoken directly to Roseville. We, we are in, in, we have a, a working group, a regular communication with all the jurisdictions in Sacramento County. Uh, and we're working very closely with the city and county and Folsom and Algrove and those. But no, I have not spoken to, uh, Roseville.
Excellent, all right. Any other public comment?
That's all the public comment in Zoom and telephone, and that we have in the council chambers.
Excellent. Uh, it sounds like council's been involved this whole time. Uh, anything else, guys, you would like to say?
So I think, uh, the only, uh, the, the real question, Donald articulated it quite well. Um, do we want to, um, it's which option that, that Steve is proposing? So we need to decide whether the additional cost would come out of our franchise fee, uh, reducing the, um, um, the gain to the city, or whether we would ask the residents to pick up the additional cost. And I personally completely agree with Donald, um, that we should be, uh, foregoing a small amount of the franchise fee and not asking residents to pick up something that the state has mandated.
Okay.
Well, both proposals have the residents picking up the cost. It's just a question of how much of the cost they're gonna pick up. 'Cause there's increases either way. This is, is my understanding, unless I've misunderstood that.
Is that right, Steve?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, both, both options have an increase, correct. The, the second option, though, it reduces our franchise fee revenue sum, so. Okay.
So I, I, I heard some resident comment about, um, how to communicate this, and I think, you know, the idea of talking about composting is a really, is a really good one, because it is doable by an awful lot of people. And it's so much simpler than most people think. If you Google this and look it up, you'll think you've gotta have, well, I, I do this, but there's a simpler way. You know, we have three bins, and you've gotta flip it and rotate. We do a lot of gardening, we produce a lot of green waste in that sense, and so we compost it, reuse it, fertilize the garden. Um, but anyone can do it with just a, a single outdoor area, uh, which basically you make a pile, uh, surround it with some simple wire from Home Depot, or something like bar fence from Home Depot, or something like that. It's, it's super easy. The smell issue people are bringing up is due to, um, anaerobic, uh, digestion that's occurring, all this simple fight like that. So that, that's sort of like the bacteria that would degrade something when there isn't enough oxygen around. And that process produces smelly gases. Aerobic decomposition does not produce smelly gases. That's when there is a lot of air around. So if you imagine a closed bin with limited air circulation, that could get smelly over time. But if you imagine a pile in your yard, or something inside of a, a wire fence, not much smell there, because it's aerobic, a lot of air can, can get in, and the microbes that grow there don't release that, that process, uh, don't release those smells in their process. So, I think that's an important, an important thing to do in terms of, uh, of education. The plastic bag going into the container, I'm not, I'm not terribly worried about, Steve, 'cause I heard you say that they have a process for like automatically removing those, or somehow removing those. So, you know, if that's gonna stop a resident from using it, because they're worried about that plastic bag, I'd rather have us deal with that in one process, rather than have people debate, you know, oh, gosh, can I use this plastic bag or not? Do I have to wash this thing out or not? Um, and I'm trying to keep the overall goal of the program in mind here. So, I don't think we're talking about composting plastic bags. Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, no, we're not talking about that, a- and I agree, I, I'm quite conflicted by it, because we've been spending decades, you know, teaching people not to put plastic into the green waste can, and here, we're gonna, you know, be offering that as an option. But on the whole, I do think it's probably the best compromise, and, uh, the processing facility that Republic, uh, is, is putting together, we'll be able to handle those.
All right, um, so we're, we need to, guys, we need to decide on which option. It sounds like Donald and David and myself are good with option two. Back me up here, guys, I just need to hear from Linda and Siri. Are you guys with option two or one?
Can I, can I just clarify one thing, too, that I, I just wanna make sure that-
Go ahead.
-that we're capturing when we talk about this. When we talk about educating the public, reminding them, because ultimately, yes, the fees will go up per unit. But if you can, if you can manage enough savings going into your green bin and out of your trash can, this could ultimately save you money.
That's right.
'Cause if, 'cause if you're looking right now and you're in a sixty-four gallon, and it's twenty-seven fifty-nine, and you can divert stuff that you've been putting into your trash into the green bin, you're gonna be twenty-ninety-three. Wow, so I get, no, well, I don't know, I take that. With option two, uh, it'd still be up a little bit. But you, the, I mean, there, we really could get to almost a wash, right? A- as we look at the prices of, of these things, and what behaviors we, we encourage. So say, these are going up, but you could save nearly ninety percent of this increase if you switch to a smaller bin, if you have managed the saving. So, whatever kind of communication plan we're thinking of, please think of it in that way, that the fee's going up, the city's, you know, the- that the fee's going up, the city's, you know, sure that the franchise fee's going down, whatever. I, I don't think the, the residents are going to hear about that. But reminding them by doing this, you could ultimately save some, or you could get to a point where this barely went up at all.
Yeah, so.
So I will move.
Communication, oh, one sec Linda. So when it comes to communication with Maria and how we tell our citizens is that it's important that we're trying to communicate that we're going to try to keep the fees as low as possible. But they're going to, you know, one of those things we're going to ask is they're going to have to want to go to the thirty-two gallon um, and then get extra green waste and then do the actual process or your fees are going to go up. But we're going to do everything in our power to try to keep them as low as possible. Go ahead Linda.
Cause now it's being picked up every week, not every other week.
Right.
Which, which means you could downsize and potentially save money. But I, I would also think communication, we shouldn't shy away from the fact that this is a state mandate we're responding to. This is not our city council voting on a whim to raise trash rates on people because that will be the dominant message out there most likely. Will be that here's the city, you know, financially sound and what are they doing? They're raising our trash rates. So I, I don't think we shy away from the state that's making us do this at all.
Right.
So I will move approval of option two, which reduces our franchise fee as opposed to um, as opposed to the, the flat out increase in um, solid waste removal fees from the public services. But with the caveat guys, that all that none of us, if we look at our bills, are paying this twenty-nine, twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents because, oh, actually we are, because it's billed on a two, and it's billed on a two monthly, a two monthly cycle. So um, so you're right, so the bill is going to go up. Um, what's that about, about uh, ten dollars? For on a two month period. But again, moving approval of option two.
And Mr. Mayor, could we please roll call vote on this item?
But they didn't ask for, they didn't ask for a vote? Do you guys still need one guys? Steve?
They did.
Don't we need a vote?
No, there's no vote on this.
I made a motion.
I know you made a motion.
Wait, they need to know between option one.
Vote to have.
Oh, we should vote.
Steve, would you like?
Don't you need to know between option one and two?
I think it would be helpful to.
It would be helpful, you want to direct vote, okay. There was a motion, do I have a second?
Again, Terry.
Roll call.
Council member Budge?
Yes.
Council member Sander?
Hi.
Council member Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes. Let's make sure we're really careful in the communication. This is not something we want on our citizens and we're going to do our best to try to mitigate the damage. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all the dirty business, talking dirty.
In multiple, in multiple languages.
Yeah, talk dirty in multiple languages, that's what I want you to learn.
Talking trash, Garrett, in multiple languages.
Stacy, can you read the next subject?
I can, uh, item number twelve point two, final discussion and direction on reinstating a planning commission.
Darcy, are you ready?
I am ready.
Let's do this.
Let's do it. Good evening, council members. Darcy Glett with the planning department. This evening, we are going to wrap up the final discussion on the planning commission reinstatement. We're going to go over, hold on, I need to, here we go. We're going to go over the various topics that we've already discussed and the council direction that we heard on those. We're also going to talk about um, some options on term limits for the five nominated and voted on members and the two at-large members. This is the same slide you saw last time. I'm not going to go through this word for word, but this is the breakdown of the authority. So you've seen this probably now three times. So at the end of the presentation, we're just going to look for council to make sure that this is exactly what um, the authority breakdown is that you want for uh, planning commission and city council roles. Council call up, we discussed council call up at the very first um, discussion. Currently, we have a council call up process in our code for director determinations. Um, it was discussed and vocalized to retain the council call up and keep that in place. But at least two council members would have to call up a project for review.
And then Darcy, could I just make one quick comment there? And it will be important again, when you do so, that you not say why and that you not express your opinion on the ultimate issue because you will need to, to remain impartial in order to uh, be able to vote on the item when it comes up.
Next topic would be structure, which we're going to spend a little bit more time on when we talk about terminals. Structure wise, um, council did agree to a seven member planning commission, five being nominated and voted on by all council, two being at large, which would also be selected by all council. We're going to walk through the various term limit um, options. So I'm going to first walk through two options that we're going to present um, for the five nominated and voted on members. The next slide is going to break this down a little bit easier. Um, but just to, really what this slide says is that the terms are going to follow two separate paths to start. Ultimately, they will follow council's term limits. So before I get into this slide a little bit more and cause any confusion, we're going to break it down. So we're going to refer to option one, having two separate member lists, member one and member two, which currently would follow council member Budge and council member Gatewood's um, election cycle. So the current, or the, the first proposal is that um, two members be selected for the remainder of that council term, which would go through twenty-twenty-two, plus one additional council term, which would be a total of five years. So two people would serve for a total of five years. This is just a, a one option. At the end of that five-year term, it would line up with the next council member cycle, election cycle for those two seats. So then it would follow that council member's term, which would be four years. Council members three, four and five, which are council member Terry, Sander and Pulapati, those would follow their existing term, which still has three additional years left by the time these people were to be nominated and voted on. So that would go through twenty-twenty-four. At the end of the term of those three seats, it would follow the next council member um, election cycle. So those new folks that would be appointed to those positions would follow their term of four years. To back up just a little bit, we heard at the last meeting that there was not um, support and consensus to put two people in member one and two spots for only a year period of time. So that's why we're coming with a couple different options. These two options ultimately align with those council members' terms. So it seems like a long duration of time, but this was the easiest way to kind of transition to where ultimately they would match up with the council members' terms. Option number two breaks it down just a little bit differently. So keeping in mind members three, four and five, there's no change to how that initial startup works just because of the way it's falling um, in the current cycle. So those three positions under this option will still serve for an initial three years. When that's over, it will follow the new election cycle and serve the four years, which is the permanent um, term limit. Members one and two, we phased this one a little bit differently. So those two positions would serve three years, which would be the same as member three, four and five. At the end of the three years, you would then appoint two new members through an application process, well, not appoint, nominate and vote on, and they would serve two years. That would, those additional two years would be the end of those council members' election cycle. So it's kind of similar to the first one. The only difference is um, you start off with two serving three years and then you nominate and vote on two new ones to come in to serve the additional two years. So it still totals five, but you get um, two new members at that third year mark. These were the two options that staff could come up with that would get eventually on a cycle of the council members' terms. The next term limits are for the two at-large member options. So the first one, um, all three of them being that they would be nominated and voted on by a council. The first one is member at-large, number one would have a five-year term, at-large would have a two-year term, permanent term length for both is four years. Second option is your at-large one has a three-year, at-large two has a three-year with four-year permanent term length options. The third option for your two at-large is one is a two-year and one is a three-year, again with the permanent term being a four-year length. Qualifications, these are the qualifications we heard last time was residency, so requirement to live within the city. There wasn't a requirement for professional experience, but a potential um, to have some sort of desirable professional experience, whether that be um, within a profession or some sort of skill set. Additionally, um, there's a list of values and ethics that we included in the last staff report from the League of California Cities. Um, and any additional professional experience um, or qualifications could also be added to that. In terms of selection, uh, staff's proposing about a three-week application process with an application um, and a statement of interest. Those would be screened to ensure residency only. Those applications would then all be turned over to the city council for review. When it comes to the meeting where we're looking at nominations and voting, we would ask for council to bring their preferred nomination and then one to two additional, just in case there's duplicates. And then the at-large members would be selected by all five. Just a little bit of information on education. We have looked up the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy. That's March sixteenth through the eighteenth of next year. We would require all planning commissioners to attend that training. We would also come up with additional educational opportunities that would be staff-led. So for our recommendations, we just want to confirm all the previous direction that has been provided and then settle on what the term options are so that we can come back on November fifteenth with a resolution to reinstate the planning commission and an ordinance in order to provide language back into our municipal code for the planning commission. That concludes my presentation and I can go back a few slides to the options.
All right, I'm first going to ask, is there any public comment?
Yes, so the first um, public comment that I have is Helen Whalen-Bashaw and I can see that she is um, coming up.
Helen, you're up.
And then um.
Her microphone's not on, I can't really hear her.
I'm going to the front right now.
Um, as far as the, my big concern about the planning commission is it's going to turn into a um, a mini-me. There has got to be some way that I believe the public needs to be made aware of all the people who applied for the positions. There's got to be a rating system that allows us to understand why the selections were made because comments were made in the past after the planning commission was um, disbanded that the Rancho Cordova got rid of the planning commission because um, they didn't listen to what you guys wanted, you guys meaning the council. So it has to really look like you've picked people who are the best qualified. And some comments were made in other meetings that led me to believe if the person that you select doesn't seem to have your same philosophy, that you will elect to not renew them and you'll get somebody else. So it sounds like you're picking and choosing the person that best aligns to what you believe the city of Rancho should go to, but I think we really need to look for the future. We need to determine if all this building growth is something really that we need, where we're cutting down trees and putting in housing. And some of these housing, they're going up so fast that they're not going to be able to sustain in thirty years, they're going to look like crap because of the way they're being built. Um, and there's no, the greenhouse is going to get worse because we don't have the space for the trees to absorb all the hot um, that the asphalt's bringing up and everything. So I am concerned that we're going to have mini-me's and we're not necessarily going to get the best qualified. And if somebody's let go, I think the public needs to know why you let them go. You know, what didn't they do that the planning commission needs to know? Because right now, to me, an outsider looking in, y'all look like a clique, a boys' club. And it, and it doesn't really seem right for us, the public, who elected most of you um, to, you're not really in tune to what I believe the um, the public maybe wants. You think you know what we want and do you really know the areas that you're selecting? I think people in the planning commission should represent the diversity in the, and the communities of Rancho, not all out in Anatola, where three of you are. They need to have one representing different like boroughs. That's what I think we should have with the planning commission. So it shows a culturally diversity of the community as a whole. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Cornelius Burke. Cornelius, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and members of the city council. This is Cornelius Burke with the North State Building Industry Association. We are the voice of the home building industry. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide comments on this item. And first and foremost, I just want to thank Darcy and entire city staff for their hard work on this issue. We support re-establishing a planning commission in the city of Rancho Cordova. We think it's a good idea. It also will allow the city council to be freed up to focus more on higher level policy issues. Three points I like to bring up tonight. Uh, point number one, the structure. We support the fact of having five appointed members and two at-large. Number two, the qualifications. Uh, we don't believe that you should have a strict qualification on professional experience. We want to make sure we have a diverse candidate pool for the planning commission. And just lastly, um, number three, when it comes up to the call-up provision, um, want some clarity on that. Um, I think it would make sense to have a council person that wants to call up an item and two additional votes, so three votes for a majority to call up an item. But otherwise, uh, we think it's a good proposal and we look forward to continue to work with the city staff on re-establishing a planning commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, our next public speaker is area code nine-one-six-eight-zero-four.
Is that Fiza?
Hello, this is Fiza Mubal.
Fiza, go ahead.
Hi, in Lincoln Village. Hey, um, I did want to add that I definitely echo the two calls before me. I think that representation matters, uh, and I specifically would like to see black diversity on the planning commission. Um, I would love for there to be at least one person, um, if not more, with a focus on or background in environmental justice, um, because there are issues in our community historically where that has been a concern. I recently was playing around with the CAL EnviroScreen tool, which shows you like hazardous um, pollutants and risk factors for different communities and census tracts. And it showed that Lincoln Village was in the ninety-second percentile for cardiovascular disease. Um, but, and then, you know, recently I did discover that we were getting a light industrial facility, a fifteen-building light industrial facility across from my park, next to school, uh, next to multifamily housing and I went, well gee, no wonder. Um, so, and, and some of the changes that did happen in the zoning to allow that did come at the hands of a plan, the previous planning commission. And so I would like there to be people with, you know, heads screwed on straight, with an eye for equity and environmental justice, and I definitely want black diversity. I'm not going to just say people of color, I'm not going to say minority, but I'm going to specifically ask for, if you could please consider having black diversity on our planning commission.
Fiza, are you volunteering yourself?
No, but if there's a brother and sister out there and you hear this, please consider throwing in your hat. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
The next uh, speaker is Diane Rogers, who's in the council chambers with us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Diane Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, wanted to address two issues. The first one, the simple one, is the call-up issue. And I know that our. And I know that our membership is concerned that it is too simple of a process. We don't want to make it, we encourage you to consider not making it a very easy process to simply move things up to council that it, you know, so you don't get into position of, oh, that's all right, we'll just move it up to council and make it too simple of a process. The second one, I'm going to go out on a limb here and be a little controversial about the concerns of who our council members appoint. You are our elected representatives and therefore it's your views and responsibility that we expect you to maintain. And therefore, selecting people that reflect your perspective as our elected leaders, I think is a good idea. And that's part of the responsibility that I think should go along with appointing your council, your planning commission members. That that's their expectation, they should reflect who our council is. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
That's all the public comment that I have for this item.
All right. So, the first thing we should try to figure out is, one, is the schedule and how we're going to nominate. The other thing is I have a couple of questions for our council. A lot of people are coming up and saying that it seems too easy to bring back initiative. If it, if they don't get it through the planning commission, they're just going to hopscotch over them. Do we need to raise the amount of money that it costs or make them try to get three council members? Adam, does it make sense to do that? Or if we get three, does that mean it's already been decided and it doesn't make sense? Well, does it break a Brown Act of any kind? So, I have that question. So, if you could like start with that one and then maybe I could find out from the council members, do they think it's too easy to hopscotch over my planning commission once we got it going?
Sure. So, in, in general, Mayor, I already think that the call-up provision is, is not a legally preferred provision.
Okay.
Because I know that it is a highly desirable provision for some council members. But the basic role that the city council will have is, one, as the critical policymaker on all land use issues where there's policy questions. And also as the judge, as the, and as the appellate body. And so, there is, there is a tension that we can work with procedurally and try to minimize procedurally when you have a call-up provision, that if there's any comment on it and if there's multiple, and certainly the answer to the question of can we have three council members call up, my answer would be no. If you want to impose, if you want to restrict because of exactly the, the issue you raised about the Brown Act and the perception that there would have been a pre-decision by having a call-up. If you want to restrict or you want to limit the access to calling up, I think that charging more money for the appeal and fully recovering the cost for city staff, council and, and the city's time and, and having that sort of appeal is something that you might ask staff to look at closely. But, but again, I think that when you call something up, it's, it's very important to be clear that you're calling it up because you think it's an important issue, not because it's something that you've prejudged.
Okay, okay.
Is that responsive, Mayor?
Yeah, it is. I, I mean, I've heard from some of the guys in Elk Grove and, and they were saying some of the hardships they were running into with the planning commission about pulling it up and, and the way they did that with revenue was the best way to do it. So, I, you know, maybe we can look into that. I don't know what's going to, I don't want to get sued, you know, but I know if we tried to ra, I know we want to raise the member, but if we had three people that said they wanted to call it up, it could be looked as it's already been decided, not that they're going to get a fair shake. So, two, I think keeps it away from the Brown Act. But does it keep us from getting sued on that? That's something I really want to find out. And then, does any other council members, did you guys hear some frustration with that about how we need to put another level of difficulty to be able to call it up past our planning commission? Just to make sure people don't just hopscotch over the planning commission and go straight to us?
Here, here, we, here, we should clarify, you're talking about two different things and calling it the same thing. So, a call-up is the commission takes an action and the council decides that, that we want to weigh in or change the decision or do something else. That's a call-up. An appeal is when an applicant doesn't get their way with the planning commission and they appeal to the city council.
Yeah, I'm call, I'm talking about, I'm sorry, I'm talking about appeal then, Donald.
Right. I clarify, between, between the two things.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Call-up is the council wanting to do something.
Right.
And appeal is an applicant, basically exhausting their rights under, under due diligence and, and their, and their legal rights as far as, as far as a, an application process. If they didn't get the action that they wanted from the planning commission, they have every right as, as a developer and owner or whatever to appeal to the final body to get a final decision. And then if they don't like that, they can go to the court. That's different than the call-up. So, I would say, I, I'm, I guess I'm less concerned that a developer doesn't get what they want and they want to have, it's already fairly expensive to bring something before council anyways. I want to say, is the security, Darcy, still north of $10,000 for a hearing with the city council?
Correct, for a basic entitlement like a use permit or a map. And the appeal fee is about $4,000.
Okay, so we're talking 15 grand or so if you wanted to appeal something from the planning commission. And the point of all of this is so that we empower a body to work on things that allow us to work on other things. Right? So, but again, an appeals process, I think 15 grand on the most part is enough of a deterrent to not abuse the appeal process. But what, if we want to talk about the call-up provision, from my understanding, because I was the one that said the, the call-up should be three, just like everything else that we put on our agenda. And it was made fairly clear to me that that is wading into some dangerous Brown Act waters that we probably don't want to mess with. And so, that two people just saying that, yeah, I want to talk about it would suffice. And so, that there's not an assumption that there's already a majority that wants to take an action or change an action. And so, I lived with that answer for a while because I was probably the most full-throated in support that I'd like the call-up provision to be a majority of the council. But I understand how dangerous that could be and how unfair to applicants and the planning commission that that could be. So, I, I'll live with two, but that's me.
Okay, good. Let's talk.
Does that make sense?
Let's talk about.
And Mayor, could I, one other, could, could I just add one more comment? I, I, I also think that when you have a two-person call-up obligation, it does make it more important for the council members to remember not to communicate to anybody what your intention is with respect to the call-up. It'll be, it, it will be slightly tricky from a Brown Act perspective to avoid, you can imagine a developer or an applicant going around and trying to ask council members to, to call, to call up their item, among other things, to save that expensive appeal fee that Darcy just talked about. And it'll be very important in that process to, to avoid Brown Act communications. And perhaps to, you know, we may even need to talk about additional procedural protections so that you don't communicate to the applicant, yes, I will say yes to this. Or, you know, there's, it is an area that, that becomes a little bit more ripe for when you, when you add the procedural protection of two to call it up, it means that they have to talk to more than one of you to get it called up. So, it actually increases the possibility in its own way that there could be behind-the-scenes conversations that could give rise to a claim of a Brown Act.
Yeah, and Adam, I hadn't even, what you just described. I, I had envisioned a council member wanting to discuss action that the planning commission took. Not that a developer would go to council members and say, call that up so that, because ultimately they should be exercising their own rights and appealing the decision. But you're saying, so what we might want to talk about, and this is, this is from, this is probably for another day and for you and Darcy to figure out first, but I don't understand, I guess the appeal fee, if they didn't appeal it and we, and, and the council called it up, then yeah, they, I guess they don't pay an appeal, appeal fee. But they still pay the fee to have it come before council, just like every other developer does for anything else right now, right?
Yeah. Yes, I would just be frank that if, if I'm a reasonably sophisticated person and I, I know that if I just, I'm upset about what the planning commission did with my project. So, I know if I just walk into City Hall and appeal it, it's going to cost me $4,000.
But if you go to one of us and it's free.
If I go to two of you.
Yeah.
Right. And convince you, then, then it's free. I'm, I'm going to go to two of you. And, and if I get no from one of you, I'm going to try to talk to more of you. So, suddenly there's conversations with more council members because we're trying to be more prudent and limit the call-up. So, so it's a, it's a good idea, but there's some downsides to trying to impose that additional protection.
Yeah, I see.
So, Adam, let me, let me, let me weigh in on this because I, it's something that I have personally experienced. And it's one of the reasons that I suggested that we add it back years ago when we were first organizing. In reality, if the applicant does not like the planning commission's decision, the, the applicant appeals and pays the appeal fee and takes it to the city council. The vast majority of the city council call-ups are something that the planning commission might have thought was a good idea, but the city council member thought was either contrary to city principles and policies or really needed to just be discussed more thoroughly. So, it, the applicants do not go to the council member and say, please call up my item because it got denied. That's their responsibility. The vast majority of any council call-up is something that the council member or the council in general has not wanted to get approved or thought should be approved differently.
May I explore that for a moment, council member?
Go ahead.
Yes.
And Darcy, I, I wonder if you're saying that you might consider limiting the call-ups to planning commission approvals only, not planning commission denials? Would that simplify or?
That wouldn't necessarily work. From my perspective, Adam, that wouldn't necessarily work.
Right, but the fact that it wouldn't necessarily work does to some extent make the, make the point I was making initially.
I understand, it makes it a moot point.
You do need to have the power to call up denials.
But again, if there's a, if there's a, this sounds awful. If there's a well-heeled applicant involved, that applicant, if they want their item appealed to the council, should be paying the cost.
So, it sounds like the only precursor to someone coming up would be the va, how much it costs to come up. Correct? And then, and they'll go around it by just going to a council members and just find two council members because it's more affordable to try to pick off five of them.
No, it doesn't, Garrett, it does, it doesn't really work that way. I'm sorry, I, I think if you, if you were to check with the city of Sacramento and find out and just get some stats on the number of council member call-ups and when the council member, when a council member was calling up an item that the planning commission had approved, that they thought was not appropriate for a particular neighborhood in their district, you would find, number one, that that vast, vastly outweighed any other situation, number one. And number two, you would find that they don't get sued because of this. This is not a new invention for us. This is something that other jurisdictions use and have used for a long time.
What did you guys do back in the day?
They had a call-up.
We had a council member, we had a council member call-up. But don't forget, without, without, without a planning commission, an awful lot of things have been approved at the city staff level. And sometimes, in the past, not so much anymore, but sometimes in the past, we have felt that a contract planning department has not approved things that were either in the city's best interest or the way in which the city has historically wanted the city to develop.
Okay.
Council member, another way as a functional matter that you could address this issue, and Darcy, I wonder if you saw this in your research, is just through informal council self-regulation. If you had, for example, the, the norm and expectation among each other that each council member would only call up a few items a year, that might go a long way. And of course, the re, the re-establishment of the planning commission is, is deliberately phased and deliberately a work in progress. So, this is something that we could certainly report back to you on and talk to you all about how it's going. And if it needs more restrictions, we could talk about imposing them later.
Actually, Adam, that's like, that's like the NBA coaches having one, one coach's challenge a, a game.
Yeah, I watch a lot of basketball.
We do, don't we?
All right, David, what do you think?
You know, Garrett, you asked what we did back in the day. So, I, I don't know, I've been sitting here trying to think of a council call-up of a planning commission item. And I remember one, I'm not even sure it was a call-up, but there was an application for a business deep in the business park, may have been auto-recycling or some light-scale manufacturing. And there was a huge controversy at the planning commission about what type of plant they were going to plant in the planting box out front. And it led to so much consternation by the applicant that basically we got a huge black eye in the development community because that story just went everywhere. I can't remember if the developer walked away. I'm not certain we called it up, but we certainly did spend some extra time sort of clearing that. There's another controversy back then about the use of barbed wire fence, or maybe it was electrified. Linda, I don't know if you remember this electrified.
Electrified, yeah.
Wire fence that may have been a planning director approval that we called up to talk about. I can't remember the, the details, but it's things.
The concertina thing.
Yeah, it's things like that.
I wasn't even on cash.
Council, council's not sure we agree with the planning commi, the planning director, you know, in that case. But the other one, it was, boy, the planning commission really made a hash of that, we better clarify. So, those are the, the examples I can, I can think of that come to mind. But I think the old standard was just a single council member saying, we need to talk about this one.
And we have a deadline. And my recollection is that from time to time, it's mostly been on things like cell towers. That can be a problematic issue from, if.
That is, that's right.
Yeah, cell towers.
A bunch of us back then had been on CORP Act where we had set certain standards for cell phone towers. First time the planning commission saw one, they just whisked it right through. That's right, that was one. And the city council, whoa, 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 wait a minute, that's not how we handle cell towers.
Well, but let's also keep in mind that, that certain subjects like that, we can decide what to delegate and whatnot. So, we also, if we have something that we know the council has a very particular opinion about, and obviously, how many times did we meet on the last one? You know, we can choose not to, not to delegate certain subject matters as well. So, that shouldn't, you know, and, and if we're anticipating that we're always going to see a lot of call-ups on a given subject, just don't delegate it, right?
Okay, Donald, but that's, but that's a, you're right. And that's a wonderful blanket statement that is where the devil is in the details because Darcy will be the first to tell you that in the kind of blanket approvals that are typically assigned to the planning commission, for instance, it's all major design review. for instance, it's all major design review, okay, or all use permits. Um, so cell towers, uh, PCN letters, those kinds of things typically just need use permits and would not come to council unless we called them up because we thought that the one on Matherfield Road, or whatever, was not an appropriate place to put another liquor store. See, so you can't just, it's really difficult to just assign blanket approvals under a category of, um, discretionary permits. That's why the call-up is useful. And I'm okay with.
I'm more concerned about the call-up being abused than it being useful. That's, that's why I said what I've said before.
I'm okay with it.
Or I'm more concerned.
Siri, what do you think?
So we're discussing a lot of what happens with minority of the time versus the majority of the time. Um, so this planning commission is absolutely useful. A lot of points that have been brought up, um, pre- for previous discussions. I mean, we should start from there, right? So the point of this discussion, I understand. You know, now, of course, I've also been educated on call-up versus appeal, so thank you on that, uh, Vice Mayor. Um, I, I think, you know, this discussion has been done. I think we need to move on to next steps for this.
So then the next steps would decide as what are we going to, the schedule of when we appoint people? So you saw a couple of them on the board. Um, I'm gonna ask everyone for their opinion, which one they're feeling, uh, and if anyone has any other ideas that make more sense to them. So, uh.
Garrett, only because I, 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 I frankly don't like either of the options that are in front of us.
Okay.
I would be, I, I don't, I don't think that a council member that, that is up, that, that potentially could change next year should be appointing for a five-year appointment.
Okay, I agree.
Um, I would be fine with, I would be fine with, um, member one and two appointments to be two years. And then, um, and then, and then I guess that couns- if there was a new council member, they could choose to reappoint or appoint till the end of their term. Um, and I guess I'd be fine with the other three of us having a three-year term appointment that, that coincides with our term. Um, but I'm not comfortable with a five-year initial. And again, you know, I know a member of the public said something about that, you know, you're gonna unappoint them because they're, they're not thinking like you or being like you. It's, it's far less of that than it is that people will apply for this type of a role and then not agree with what their role actually is. Uh, and so th- there can be people that, that, it's not that, it's not that their opinion's wrong or that their positions are wrong. It's that they may not be easy to work with, or not work well with the public, or not work well with staff. Uh, and so that's more of my concern, that these initial appointments should be on the shorter end than on the longer end. And I don't think any of us would suggest to have, uh, an appointment that's longer than anyone's term of office. So the fact that, that two of the, the seats would be up in a year to stick whoever could potentially get elected to that seat with not being able to choose anyone for their entire term, I think is inappropriate. So I would be comfortable with a two-year term for numbers one and two, and a three-year term for the other ones. And I'm fine with, I think how you, you did at large was, was it three and four? Was it two and four?
Yeah.
Can't remember. Uh, but I wouldn't want, especially initially, I wouldn't want anyone to have more than a four-year term, period. Because you'll learn a lot in the first year or two about whether or not, um, they're up to the task of doing this kind of work. Um, and then, you know, I think after that, having some, some stability would be nice. I, but I, you know, a, a lot of elected officials talk about stability in things like this. And when you are the elected official, stability is really important. But if you're the challenger, or you're the person that's wanting change, um, stability is not nearly as important as, as being heard and being flexible and having opportunities for, for turnover and, and, um, and so I think we need to be flexible in, in accommodating both of those interests. And the fact that as you start this work, could end up learning that there are people that just, they're not a good fit for this. They're not, they're not, they're not putting in the work to learn what the role is. They disagree with what their role actually is, even though we are the ones that are commissioning them, um, and giving them the parameters of what their authority is and isn't. Um, and if we run into those types of issues, we should, we should have the ability and the flexibility to make changes sooner, sooner rather than later.
Excellent. All right. Uh, Siri, what do you think?
So, um, I, I do agree with Helen, you know, that, you know, we don't, I wouldn't want this person to be a mini-me, especially because planning is not my forte, and I'd like somebody with more experience on this to kick, to help educate me. So I do agree on that point. Um, the other one, I was, uh, also li- I like the, uh, uh, option that was put out that we need more diversity and we need representation from all, all parts of the city. So those are really good points that our callers brought up today. With respect to the term, I was wondering, an option that we could do is we could delay, um, the two members who are up for reelection, because we're gonna start this in April. Uh, the two members could start in December, which would be with the new, um, two councils that get started. So that's just a six-month, six-plus month delay on start. And, you know, that way we don't have a short term for some, because we are investing in this commission. And, uh, two years is a short period of time to, for a turnover. So that's another, I, I did not wanna do this, but I'm putting an option out there.
David, what do you think?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what, what your option offer was.
She says, Linda and I wouldn't, wouldn't pick somebody, whoever gets reelected would pick someone to put them in, uh, and then they wouldn't have to worry about, uh, choosing, uh, smaller terms for us.
Yes. I, I would also say that, you know, assuming there isn't turnover, Siri, people can be reappointed. But like, I know it's a short term, but that doesn't mean the person goes away in two years. There's a chance of it, but that doesn't mean, that, that doesn't have to happen.
True, absolutely right. Uh, they could or they could not, but you know, we are investing. And just, let's assume they do, they don't like it, we don't like them, whatever, right? Um, people might not wanna come in and invest for a two-year period of time, thinking that it might be just for two years. But you're right.
David, what do you think? David?
Um, you know, I'm okay with the options as presented, uh, from staff. It, it's just an awkward time. Uh, we're just struggling with the awkward timing of this with the election. You know, Siri's point that she just made is not bad either. Maybe you just wait on those two. The problem is, we're gonna educate up, we had to train up whoever we start with. And do you, those two, if they're delayed, will miss that. So that may be a, that may be a problem for that argument. Um, otherwise, I think this is sort of, as proposed by staff, maybe you can mess around with the years a little bit, make it two years for original appointment, and then three years for whoever's holding the seat, um, to renew them until we can all run term by term.
Okay. Linda, what do you think?
Oh, um, so I actually agree with Donald in his first point, because I thought five years for, um, the two people up for election next year was kind of odd. And so I, in order to get us back on a, an appropriate cycle, um, it seems like, um, having two-year terms for the two members up for reelection next year would be logical. And, um, and then three years for the other three. Um, with typical, with typically with four-year term lengths. Um, I have to comment, um, on the thing about the mini-me, I don't know how anybody else who made their selections originally felt about it. But personally, I was specifically looking for somebody that had, um, experience in architecture, engineering, construction, planning. And I picked the person that mi- fit those terms. So it's not that you need a mini-me in terms of philosophy, but each of us will, will look for somebody that they think will bring something important to, to the commission. Somebody who's a strong environmentalist would logically pick somebody who's a strong environmentalist. Um, you know, you can, you can imagine a whole bunch of categories. Um, I still think the idea of having seven is kind of odd at this point, but whatever. So, um, but I probably don't have a strong opinion on the initial start or the initial terms of the two at-large members.
Would you pick the one Donald say as a, as a good-to-go? So you're okay with that one?
Which one was that?
Two years for you and me, and then three years for everybody else. And then we'll just, then we can see, then it'll be at the same point at that point. So if me or you lose, we can still have.
Oh, yeah. No, in terms of, in terms of the initial five members, then I do, I completely agree with that.
Okay.
Two terms for the two of us, and, uh, two years for the two of us, and three years for the, for the other three. And like, but like I said, in terms of the two at-large members, I don't have a strong opinion about that.
Okay.
I think seven is gonna be an odd number, but that's okay.
All right. So guys, that's, um, so that's Linda, Donald, and myself want the two and the three. And so, um, so that's three of us that want the two and three. I want Donald's plan. Two years for me and Linda, and then three years for everybody else. And then with the, whatever your term on the people that are the at-large person, whatever you put on there.
So, uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just real quick.
If I could make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Donald.
I'm sorry, if I can make a suggestion, I'm. Can you guys hear me?
We hear you.
Okay. Um, if I can make a suggestion on the at-large?
Mm-hmm.
So that we stagger all of these things that we don't end up with four people out at one time, why don't we make the two at-large a four-year term?
It's, I think that's.
That way that, that way those two never come during an election year.
Okay.
Uh, that works.
So you'd have two, you'd have the, the first two, then the next one, then, then the next three would be three, and then the last two would be a four-year term.
That works.
Okay. Thank you. Garrett, I don't know, are you agreeing with?
I'm agreeing.
So, 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 sorry.
Want to roll through that one more time?
It's like, uh.
You have to write it down, I apologize.
Yeah.
This is a little more calculus than we always wanna do at the, at the dais, but, uh.
Yeah.
What I under.
So Mike, so, so, so looking, looking at these options in front of us, members one and two appointments would be a two-year term.
Correct.
Members three, four, and five would be a three, a three-year term.
Correct.
At-large would be a four-year term.
So, so just know, the next cycle for one and two would have to be three years or some odd number to get onto the election cycle. So, um, for the second term, for the one and two, would have to be staggered in some way.
Correct.
Oh, good point.
The ne- so, no, no, so, so the next one, so when one and two come up, they would be appointed to the end of the term.
Correct.
So they would be one year into that term, so they would get another three-year term, and then it would be a four-year term after that.
Yes.
So that.
Which, which is pretty close to option two, as far as that just staggers it on the right.
Correct. Except for what it's doing is, is given if, if one of us gets unelected, it'll give them a chance to have a little.
Do it earlier.
Yeah. So minus the three, carry the one.
Right. It means.
Vibe by ampersand exclamation point bat symbol.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I know, but, but essentially what we're doing is, if there's a new council member that's one or two, they'd only have to wait a year before they get a chance to reappoint or appoint. So, right? That's it. That's, that's, that's really the only, the only variable here is we're not giving somebody some super term that nobody else would ever get. And so in this case, nobody's getting more than four years on this coun- on, on this commission before the coun- the, well, I take it back. Nobody's getting more than a four-year term, but I believe, and I hope we're leaving this in there, that maybe it takes a super majority to remove a commissioner, but that should be in the charter somewhere. That these are not appointments that are forever. That if most of the council or, or let's say, four out of five council members wanna remove a commissioner, that should be possible.
Okay.
Shouldn't there be?
And I know that, and I've seen that in commissions across the region.
Shouldn't there be term limits of two terms?
No.
That's really common.
Well, you've been on council for nineteen years. Do you believe in term limits? I don't. I, I.
I'm talking about.
At, at any level. In my opinion, I, I don't believe in term limits at any level of government. That's what elections are for. If, if somebody wants to keep, if somebody can keep getting appointed, then, and they're doing a good job, then let them keep doing a good job. That's my sense. If people disagree with me, by all means.
Linda?
I would not begin, I would not begin to speak for David or the other three members who, um, I know why I reappointed my appointment, because he brought unique skills to the planning commission. I would not begin to speak for David or any of the other, uh, three colleagues.
Yeah, I'm also generally not a fan of, um, term limits. Um, I think you can lose some really incredible expertise if you were to, to sort of across the board enforce them. Um, you may have a unfortunate political situation where a member would like to get rid of their planning commissioner, but doesn't feel like they have the ability to. Having all members of the city council sort of vote to confirm a planning commission nomination or, or deny one, um, would make sense under that circumstance.
So a super.
So a super majority, same four or five, to take one out or not approve one?
Or not, maybe not approve one. Yeah, I don't know.
Could I, could, could I?
Although usually we do, usually we do a simple majority, that might be an Adam question.
One sec, Adam.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you, just, thank you, just as a, to clarify also with Darcy. So, um, all, everywhere where we say you're, you're appointing, you're nominating subject to a majority vote of the full council ratified.
That is correct.
We can't self-impose our own, our own thresholds?
I'm sorry?
We cannot, are you saying that we cannot impose our own thresholds to, for action?
That's what you guys approved last time.
So our, our expectation, um, let me just understand the question. Mr. Terry, you're saying you would like to possibly say, for example, council member would, Budge would nominate, and unless there was a super majority to either, uh, stop her nomination from going forward or to approve her nomination, you'd get a super majority going in different directions. But I think that we had contemplated, Darcy, please correct me if I'm mistaken, that there would be a, just a straight majority vote to ratify each of the nominations. And again, this can be something that, that you, you establish your own practice with. You could defer very, very heavily as a council by practice, or you could defer, you could not defer by practice. And it would be something that you could come back and update if there was an issue with it. Darcy and I, you know, we're on the same page so far?
That is correct, Adam. That is what we heard last time.
And, and I think, Mr. Terry, was there another, another question there?
No, I, I guess my, my question is, is are you saying we don't have the power to say that, you know, to remove a commissioner takes four out of five members? Like, we, we, is it, is there something illegal about us changing from majority to a super majority on a given subject if we all agree to the rules?
Um, th- there's not, but I, I, based upon practical experience, you might want to get some advice before you make that particular decision.
Okay, I'll, I'll, for now, I'll, I'll let, I'll let this lie. I, I'm fine with just a majority, confirming or removing. I just wanna make it harder to remove some, that's all. But, but I'm fine leaving it the way it is for now. I don't, I don't.
I, yeah, I guess I would just ask for, for the city manager, and, um, even where there's just a majority vote, have you seen removal? Removal has not been a, a common thing, um, as a practical matter. Um, as a practical matter, the vote to remove is something that appears to take a, a very significant exertion of attention.
I, I would agree. And that, and that's hence the reason I would say I'd wanted to make it harder. But it's fine. Just leave it the way it is. I'll, I'll drop my idea unless somebody else really wants to die on this cross right now.
All right.
So I don't know where we are. Where are we?
The cross dying.
It's over. We're.
Yeah.
To, to remove or appoint or confirm, it's a majority of the council.
Excellent.
And we're, we're, we've got terms of two, three and four years.
Cool. So you guys got the write-ups. You now know the terms. You now know, uh, when we're going to do it. And, and then, and you also know that you were going to come back with a question about the money and, like, that's the only one we have questions.
So I think the, the hope is actually to come back with actually the action and not have another discussion. I think we got direction to make sure from the, from the appeal process that it's, uh, a, a hurdle that's necessary to, to do an appeal. And I think there's already some language in there, uh, for those processes. So I think we've gotten that direction. I don't think we need to come back for that discussion. I think we have enough information to bring back the full, uh, resolution and, and ordinance to, uh, with this additional information and direction based on the conversation today.
Good.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I just want to make sure we have the final confirmation on the, the start date of the planning commissioner, because I, I did hear some various, uh, suggestions.
So, so one of the things, if, if I may, is just that when we talked about the appointment schedule, um, when there's a, an election for a council member, lots of times we need a little bit of time to actually get to the appointments of their selected members. And so, uh, we did talk about April as a start date, uh, for this planning commission, but also as far as an ongoing date, as far as moving forward, so that when new council members are elected, uh, they're not then just expected to turn around, uh, that month or that day and look at the applications and point a planning commissioner in January. It gives a little bit of time and leeway, uh, between the appointment of a council member, uh, be, then with the appointment of the planning commission member. So, uh, there is a little bit of staggering of when the transitions will happen with planning commission, not to be totally aligned with the, uh, with the election of the council member, if that makes sense.
Guys, do you guys?
That makes sense, Mike. And the only, the only thing that, um, that would be off, uh, uh, call it off opportunity, um, I think there's some information about the fact that the League of California Cities planning commissioner training is in March. So if you wait until, no, uh, April to appoint a person, that person would not have the opportunity to go to, would have to wait another, uh, twelve months in order to go to, uh, formal league training.
Yeah, totally agree. We, let's work on changing that so it gives time to actually attend those planning commission, um.
Yeah, check, check on that date because I.
Yeah.
I have been the keynote speaker for that, and I can swear it was in January. Maybe that was two years ago.
In the past, David, it was in January.
Well, elections, it's in January when it's new member training. Um, but let, let's also be realistic that this may be worth hiring our own facilitator one time to do this. So get, like, paying the league to come out to City Hall and train seven people on staff on how to work together.
I, I think.
But yeah, I'd like it to go.
Yeah.
And Council, if I may, um, I think the idea was that the appointments would be made, uh, sometimes, um, in early January or late December. The terms will not begin until April one. This way there's opportunity for some training, is tr, opportunity to provide, uh, the kind of hands-on experience before they begin the formal term of the commission. So, so we have, I think we, as long as we have some flexibility with the, with that timeline, we can always set the start date in April, but with the understanding that there may be some upfront work with some training work.
Correct, correct.
Quick clarification.
Yes. Go ahead, Linda.
Good clarification.
No, no, no. She, she was saying good clarification, not quick clarification.
She said quick clarification. I apologize. All right. Do you guys have everything to come back to us with something that I can vote no on? I meant yes. All right. Excellent. All right. Thank you. All right. Quick backroom break. We're going to take a five-minute bathroom break, and then we're going to come back and hear all about redistricting. All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. And Stacy, can you please read the subject?
The subject for item twelve point three is receive county of Sacramento presentation regarding county redistricting and provide council input.
Maria, staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Maria Chikow-Niestad, Communications and Public Affairs Director. This evening, we'll walk you through the county's redistricting information, focusing primarily on the proposed maps and the Board of Supervisors' redistricting timeline. The County of Sacramento provided us with their redistricting presentation that will be presented to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. This presentation includes background information on their redistricting efforts as well as proposed maps. So based on this evening's discussion, you can let us know if you'd like staff to submit formal input to the Board of Supervisors on your behalf and what that form, um, might look like. So the, this is the, um, the county's presentation uh, that they will be providing to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. Um, and these are the topics that they'll cover, the online comments, the input from neighborhoods, the public's submitted maps, the draft maps, which will focus on, uh, public comments and direction from supervisors. This is an overview of the redistricting rules and goals that the county is abiding by. Essentially, what they're looking at is making sure that, to the extent possible, that the districts are geographically contiguous, that they keep the geographic integrity of the local neighborhoods or communities in a manner that minimizes its division. Graphic integrity of a city shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division, that the boundaries are easily identifiable, and that they follow a natural or artificial barriers such as rivers, streets, highways, et cetera. That the lines shall be drawn to encourage geographic compactness, and that the boundaries shall not be drawn for purposes of favoring or discrim, discriminating against a political party. In your, um, in the, in this, uh, presentation, you'll see that they've provided a summary of the online and workshop comments as well as information on communities of interest, neighborhood information. And then they had, uh, received draft maps from the public. And these are also in the online presentation that will be provided to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. What we want to focus on this evening are the maps that, um, are proposed. And these are the three maps that the county is proposing at this time. And, uh, before I walk you through each of these three maps, I wanted to pull up a, a map of the current district. If we could do that per se, Fanny. So just to give you, I think most of you are very familiar with what the district looks like in its current form. You'll see here, this is a, the current district map, and the city is in the green area, which is District Five. And you'll see that the purple area is District One, the light blue is District Three, pink is District Four, District Two is in the lower half on the bottom. It's yellow. Then, of course, we're in District Five. Okay, so if we can go back to the presentation, and I'll walk you through the proposed, um, maps that the county will be considering tomorrow. Okay, the first map is Map Two-O-One. This would split the city into two districts, placing most of the city in District Four, with some of the northwest portion of the city in District Five. You can see in this map that Gold River would, would be in District Three. And we can come back to any of these maps if you, if you'd like, once we're done. This is Map Two-O-Two. This also would split the city into two districts, placing the south, the southern portion of the city in District Five and the northern portion of the city in District Four. Again, Gold River would be in District Three. And this is the third map, Map Two-O-Three. This map would place the city, uh, in District Three, which would be shared with Arden Arcade, Carmichael, Fair Oaks and Gold River. Rosemont and Mather would be in District Five. So we'll come back to these maps in a moment. Uh, I want to give you an overview of what the timeline looks like for the Board of Supervisors. Again, the, um, the board will discuss the draft maps. Um, possibly they will select one or four focus maps, and that, or they could provide, um, direction for revisions on the maps. And then here is their timeline. Tomorrow, information and maps will be presented to them. They will hold an additional community workshop on November sixth. On November sixteenth, the Board of Supervisors will select a preferred map or direct additional changes. And then on November seventeenth, they'll select a final map and bring it to, it will be brought back to them on December seventh for adoption. So most of the work takes place in November. That is the end of the presentation that the Board of Supervisors will see tomorrow. And, um, at this time, we, uh, you can, uh, I can answer any questions or you could, um, discuss among yourselves what your thoughts are about the maps. Again, the goal of this evening is to, um, you can let us know if you would like to provide some formal input to the Board of Supervisors regarding these maps.
All right. Stacy, do you have any public comment?
Do not have any public comment cards from those that are in the council chambers. And I am looking at Zoom and telephone, and I do not see any hands raised.
All right. Um, guys, so here's the deal. Do we want to, right now, and, um, we need to make a decision, we, uh, I, I want to lean on my political savant, Donald. Should we, as a city, have an opinion on this kind of thing? Or is it like, I want to tell the council, you know, what's the best thing for us to do? Is it something we write a letter on our own, or what do you think the best option for us is?
I, my two cents was, uh, but I wasn't here at the last meeting. I wouldn't have agendized this and put it on the agenda, but since it's in front of us, I would tell you personally, the best thing for our community is, is Two-O-Three. Um, it gives us the most influence in a district. Um, the more you split us up, the less influential our community is when, um, influencing county action. Um, if they think, you know, that we're, we're only a small piece of two different places, then we're not, then we don't really have much of a voice. Uh, so keeping the city intact, I think, would be by far the most, um, advantageous for the city. And frankly, being the only incorporated city within a district means a lot, uh, means we would have a lot of influence over that seat from an election standpoint and from an influence standpoint.
Okay.
Not to mention that Gold River should never have not, Gold River, and I, I want to say, looking at that, that's probably Rosemont as well, was, is within this. Maybe no, no, Rosemont wouldn't be in Two-O-Three.
No.
That would still be in District Five. Yeah, I mean, one that, one that made it as contiguous as humanly possible in our planning area is what is best for us. Um, short of that, higher cities staying in one piece, to me, is the most advantageous thing for the city.
Okay. Thank you, Donald. David, what do you think?
Well, I, I agree with those comments. So, um, there is a little added bit here, though I might, I might want to focus on, you know, our school district boundary is really relevant. Folsom-Cordova Unified, Elk Grove, there's no, there's no, like, fixing the, uh, our boundary with regard to Elk Grove. Um, so I, I would maybe rank order things, like, the most important is city boundary because we want to keep that influence. Second most important boundary is going to be something like Park District or School District. I'd probably lean towards School District. In which case, that area of, uh, Butterfield River East, that neighborhood, the, the easternmost part of, um, the north side of Highway Fifty, sometimes, I don't know if that'd be labeled Rosemont or not, but some people it might be. But basically, it's that one little notch neighborhood over there that's in the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, two hour west of Bradshaw, north of Folsom Boulevard, all the way up to a canal that runs through there. Again, a canal boundary. I guess we've got one already on our edge. Um, that and Mather. The Mather development is, uh, is in our school district, Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. So, um, I, I, I suppose Rosemont would be of a lesser priority then. But, so I, I would, I'd say, you know, try to keep the school district intact after the city boundary. And after that, look to the planning or planning, overall planning boundary, which is, uh, the same as the Park District boundary. So looking at that Map Two-O-Three, I would swap, like, Gold River for those, the other areas, or something like that.
Well, but let's also, this is what's in front of, this is what's going to be in front of them. They, they, they never take, take the first shot. So they have these, they get comment, and then they make changes, and we see them again. Um, or at least that's how it worked ten years ago. So, I mean, I'd say in ranking these, Two-O-Three is in the best interest, but I would ta, I would agree with you. Uh, give up Gold River for, to go to the ci, to the City of SAC boundary and to pick up Mather as well, um, would be the, would be the best for Ranch Cordova, for sure. Um.
Yeah, you gotta play with the population numbers, I guess, right, Donald? So, Gold River, that might be ten thousand people. I don't know. And Mather and that Butterfield River East are not coming anywhere near that.
Yeah. What, what, what's, what's really startling to me and really frustrating to me about these is Folsom stays whole in every, in all three of these. If you notice that. Even South Folsom is covered. We're the only ones that are being bifurcated like that in any way, shape or form. Um, and it's pretty insulting, and it's, to me, it, it, I, 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 I question whether or not we have legal grounds um, of disenfranchisement. But I'm, I'm looking at this and saying, Folsom stays whole in every single one of these. The City of SAC stays whole in every single one of these. Elk Grove stays whole in every single one of these. Citrus Heights, I believe, does as well. So why are we the only ones that are, like, being left up to, we'll see how that works.
Yeah, that's pretty outrageous. I agree.
So it, it's pretty frustrating. And, and to, and to even look at Two-O-Two and Two-O-Three taking South Folsom. And they, and I, I mean, that's existed for what, four years? Uh, and we have, uh, we're a nineteen-year-old city, and in two of these maps, they basically cut new and, and older Rancho in half, as if they're two different communities. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I would say that we, as a council, sort of, I, I will say this, that if, if Two-O-One or Two-O-Two end up being the ones recommended, I, I'm going to be asking the city attorney what, what rights and options we have. Um, so I would expect Two-O-Three or, and something that even goes beyond that to include, like, say, Rosemont and Mather, um, I think make a whole heck of a lot of sense to us.
That, I agree with Donald a hundred percent.
Yeah, let's be careful about use of the, let's be careful about use of the word Rosemont. So Rosemont would be south of Highway Fifty, um, up to the city boundaries. Butterfield River East would be north of Highway Fifty, east of that canal.
I would say either side of Highway Fifty to, to the City of Sacramento border, and they can adjust the lines around Elk Grove and South Sacramento.
I, I agree. I, I would love to stack.
Yeah, there's plenty of movement, Da, Da, David, I mean, we did this at the school district when I was on the school board. And like, you know, your hope is always that, that, that the one that needs to grow and the one that, that needs to shrink share a border. Everyone shares a border with, with District Five, which is the one that needs to shrink, right? And District One needs to shrink a little bit as well, because the Toma's grew, and Elk Grove grew, and we grew, and Folsom grew. And so District Five has to shrink, but there are shared borders all over the place. What's frustrating to me is the shared borders that keep changing are the ones that affect our residents, not the City of SAC or not Elk Grove. I mean, there's very little, except Two-O-One to Two-O-Two are relatively the same, except for our borders. Two-O-Three, there's a little change, it looks like, to the City of SAC or, like. 203, there's a little change, it looks like, to the City of SAC or, like, the pocket area or something over there. But you can just as easily move more there and either take more into Elk Grove or less into Elk Grove and not affect us.
I think it's the population, if you think about it. Right. My thing is, I don't want to see my city bifurcated, and I think we should have... What was it called, David? Not Rosemont?
Our city.
Our city, not bifurcated.
Butterfield Riviera East.
To Mather.
Yeah, we want everything to... We want to continue us all the way to WAT, north and south of the river. I mean, sorry, north and south of Highway 50, just south of the river.
I think if you take Breckin and Mather, that might be population equivalent to Gold River. But Rosemont, as a whole unit, is like 23,000 or 25,000 people.
But that's like saying that, okay, but where do you draw the line in South Sacramento, in the unincorporated part, before it hits Elk Grove?
Oh, that's true. I hear you there.
Or Vintage Park, or wherever else. There's plenty of other places to move to.
I misinterpreted what you were saying. Yeah, you're right.
No, yeah, it just depends on where you move the line. We want to move the line to WAT, to the City of Sacramento, and have that all within one seat. That would be the best for our residents. And frankly, the police force and everything else is all housed out of our city and responding to theirs. So why wouldn't you want to have that as a continuous service line? Vintage Park is a different police, or it's a different substation now, and a lot of other things. So if you're looking at where the county services even were, you could draw those lines in another place and make District Two get bigger in the south area and take parts of District Five and leave the rest of it to District Three.
Right. Cyrus?
Yeah, Council, based on the comments that I have heard, I just want to be sure, in the way of communicating with the county, if we took 202, Map Two, and modified what is now in District Five and extended it to include the entire city, would that be an option that the council will accept?
Say that again, Cyrus.
Yeah, Cyrus.
Yeah, so let me re...
Yeah. Hard to see it, but I see what you're... That's WAT Avenue is the dividing line in 202?
Cyrus, hang on a minute.
Can you bring 202, the single map, please, so we can see it entirely on the screen?
Yeah, that's what we would want.
Yeah, so I think, you know, taking this map...
But we need to remember, guys, we need to remember that either, in either 2001 or 2011, the area between the Mayhew Drainage Canal and Folsom Boulevard and WAT Avenue and the river went into District Three. Rancho Cordova, as a community, has been participating in redistricting since 1981. And we've always had a seat at the table. And that has been brought up many times, for whatever reasons. This time, somebody has decided that we would be the chopping block. We would be where they start with congressional districts and they do the closure. And they divide us up into little bits and pieces. And that's not going to work for us, period. So you can either modify 202, or you can modify 203. But the comments have been really good. It's important that we stay together as a unit. And if we have the ability to go all the way to WAT Avenue,
That's our preference.
That's the best of all possible worlds.
Yeah.
But as David points out, in the past, we sometimes used, or tried to consolidate around the school district boundaries. Sometimes, we've tried to consolidate around the Park District boundary. But right this minute, if we want to try to get everything from the river as the north boundary, south, and the, and WAT Avenue as the west boundary, then we, then we need to get that chunk of Larchmont Riviera, the original Larchmont Riviera and College Greens East, back out of the third district, where they've been for 10 or 20 years, and include that back in Rancho Cordova.
Well, that, I would say, the College Green East comment, that was the western boundary of my school board seat in SAC City Unified.
Yes, it was. No, actually, Donald, the old highway alignment between Butterfield and Riviera East was the boundary, because...
No, that's the eastern boundary. That's the eastern boundary.
Yeah, the kids in Butterfield went to SAC City Unified, not Folsom-Cordova.
Some of them did. The eastern boundary was Mather, and then up to the north, or not Bradshaw, up on the north end, or south of Folsom. But not all of the kids in Butterfield went to SAC City Unified.
Okay, Donald, but we didn't move into Butterfield.
No, I know, but... I don't want to talk about Butterfield. I want to talk about College Green. If we're arguing that our city boundaries should be respected, then I think asking to bite off a chunk of the City of Sacramento, which is College Green, probably isn't very appropriate.
No, 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 not College Greens, College Greens East. If, I'm sorry, I realize you guys don't know this the way I do. But if you take WAT Avenue and you go east from WAT Avenue, you are first in Larchmont Riviera, the original Larchmont Riviera. Next, you are in, when you go in on Tiber, you're in College Greens East. Then you come to the Mayhew Drainage Canal.
Okay, you're calling it something different than I... Okay, okay, I agree with you.
College Greens was in the city of, College Greens, the original College Greens is within city limits of Sacramento.
Correct, yeah. What you're calling College Greens is something different than what I would have called it. Okay.
All right, Cyrus, go ahead.
So, Council, I just want to be clear on the direction. Persephone, if you could bring the 203 just for a second, because there are two options here. One is to, you know, this boundary basically puts the entire city in one district, District Three, but it doesn't respect any of the other boundaries, no school district, no...
Our district or anything else we represent.
So I'm hearing that 203, while it preserves the integrity of city being in one district, it doesn't respect the other ones. Going back to 202, we think that with this map, if they could basically remove the purple area that's north of 50 and put it in District Five, so this entire city boundary is in District Five, is something that would be acceptable to the city council. Is that...
Yeah, and I argue...
Hold on. Linda, hold on a sec.
With the exception of... With the exception of, if you want to get all of the planning area back into the same district, you've got to take that little chunk that is the river to WAT Avenue to Folsom Boulevard to the Mayhew Drainage Canal, back into the same district.
Yeah.
Yeah, this map doesn't, this, I believe, is bifurcating Norcade into District Three instead of District Five. That would be concerning. I think that should all be in one. The other thing, we could make the suggestion as well. If you took this map and you said, get the entire city boundaries, and then have it go... You could have it go all the way to Hazel, you could have it go all the way to Folsom's boundary, and then take District Four and move it down and include Rancho Marietta, and expand in District Two the Vineyard area to take the entirety of the Vineyard into it. Because I don't know why they're only taking, like, two-thirds of the Vineyard. But if you made District Two bigger there, and you made District Four go down towards Rancho Marietta, then you're preserving a core pocket of people in District Three.
So, okay, so Donald, so number one, I'm assuming when you say Norcade, you're talking about Norcade Circle?
Yeah.
All right, so District Four, for 10 years now, has represented all the way down to Rancho Marietta, which you see with the dotted red line. So in those hearings 10 years ago...
No, that's in District Five right now.
No, that dotted line, all the way down in this map, 202, that's on the screen. All the way down, the dotted line to Rancho Marietta is District Four. They gave that to District Four 10 or 20 years ago, but I think it was only 10. So in District Two, if you sat in those hearings, they kept having to go a little further east and east. Jimmy Lee was the representative at that point, and they had to go a little... They had to keep going a little further into Vineyard in order to create enough population in District Two to balance their numbers.
We can bring that same map if that helps.
If they were moving those, that's where we would advocate moving the lines. Yeah, and I see it. You're right. You're right. That must have changed 10 years ago. Because I remember...
We're given, the county has assigned, poor Maria, this task of trying to create some cohesion, when we all know that none of this is logical. And we're the center of the closure, and they're trying to make it all work. And 10 years ago, it was the Vineyard. Today, we do not want it to be Rancho Cordova.
Amen, sister. That's exactly what I was trying to get at, too. Yeah. As much as we can, also in our surrounding communities, we should be advocating for being in the same district, which is likely going to be District Three.
All right, so Cyrus has got a challenge. They're going to meet tomorrow. So what if we simply tell him what we would like to have and let him present that?
Sure, or have somebody write a letter. I mean, I think you got... Cyrus, did you get enough direction here?
I believe so. I think, but to be 100% sure, I make sure that we have, who are speaking for the council here. If you can bring 202 back on the screen, my understanding is that the council supports with the 202, with the modifications to include the entire city in District Five plus the area between Mayhew and that section all the way to WAT Avenue.
And WAT Avenue.
And WAT Avenue. Is that in...
Yeah, and we encourage them, we encourage them to explore expanding and to make up for that difference. We urge them to continue to include Rancho Marietta in District Four and expand Vintage, or Vineyard, to make up the difference, and not to bifurcate our communities.
Okay.
Correct.
And bifurcate, and do we use the strong language and disassociate, or one of those words to tell them not to do that to us?
Oh, excuse me, I throw in environmental justice. How dare you, how dare you separate, how dare you separate the half of Rancho, one half of Rancho Cordova from the other? This goes back to the argument 10 years ago that we were creating two different Rancho Cordovas. It's ridiculous.
Well, and Linda, and for the fact that you kept Folsom whole, even including their south of 50, which is affluent and a brand-new community, they stayed whole, Citrus Heights stayed whole, the City of Sacramento, for the most part, has two districts within their community, and Elk Grove stayed whole, and so did Gull. We're the only ones in these maps that have been bifurcated at all.
Absolutely.
Okay, no, I think we're clear on the direction. I also see that Rebecca Sloan with Supervisor Natoli is also online, so I'm sure she's hearing this discussion, and she can convey our message to Supervisor Natoli. But we will put this in writing tomorrow, and we will submit that to the Board of Supervisors.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just, to share with Don, it's not that we don't want to be in his district, but if we're not in his district, we want all of our people in the same one.
I'm really shocked that we wouldn't, that it's painful to think that we wouldn't be, honestly.
Oh, God.
It's like a big mental recalibration.
There will be, like...
David, if you look back historically, if you look back historically, in 81, District Five, where there was nobody living in the county, you know, District Five included parts of Fair Oaks and all of Folsom. So then you fast forward 10 years, and they lost all of Fair Oaks and parts of Folsom. And then you fast forward 10 years from that, and they lost all of Folsom. It just, you know, we started off in the days when Folsom only had 10,000 residents. And now what, they've got 85,000? Just like Rancho Cordova, so...
Well, Elk Grove 20 years ago was what, 15,000 or something like that?
God, yes. And now they're at 85.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and it's going to happen. Frankly, it's going to happen to us. I mean, just develop the land, we're going to be, you know, over 100,000, you know, easily within 10 years. So, you know, they're going to continue to need to move these things around. But I think if you look at our surrounding communities and the services that we're providing, anchored within the city, right, public safety in particular, like, it makes all the sense in the world that that stays in the same seat with the rest of our community.
Yeah, and that Folsom-Cordova Unified School District boundary, that's the one that's most in play with what we just talked about, that establishes an awful lot of community. You know, because that, those are sports team boundaries, those are kids going to school together boundaries. That is such an interest group, such an enormous interest group to keep together. So that Breckin neighborhood and Mather with the rest of us on that end of the school district, I really would urge them not to slice off something that is that key.
David, that is such a deja vu statement. Does this sound like 20 years ago?
Yeah.
Before LAFCO. Give me a break.
Yep.
And here we are again.
When LAFCO took an act to our boundary for no good reason and cost us those parts of our school district. Yeah, we're paying the price for that.
We are a phenomenal, successful city with a balanced budget and incredible opportunities and residents who trust us to provide those opportunities. And somebody's trying to split us up again.
So, Council, just, we will go ahead and draft a letter and submit that to the County Board of Supervisors. Another thing I wanted to encourage all of you as members of the community and as elected officials to please do reach out to the elected members of the board and convey your concerns and your message. I think that would also be appropriate and powerful.
We can completely bombard them with emails. Thank you, sir. Of elected officials and the city.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I mean, don't, I would, don't encourage people to email your city council members. Email your county supervisors. We're not, you know, we didn't get to... Yeah, we can send a letter. Beyond that, like, nobody's going to fire us up. You need to call it a cancel.
Not our decision. That's right.
Definitely not.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right, last one. 12.4, subject. Stacy, can you go ahead, subject?
Fiscal year 2020 through 2021, preliminary year-end financial report and resolutions authorizing budget amendment and reserve policy amendment.
Kim?
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kim Durant, Hara, Georgia, Administrative Services Director. My presentation this evening is to provide a brief review of the city's general fund preliminary year-end performance for fiscal year 2020-21. And I say preliminary because these numbers are currently being reviewed by the city's external auditor and will be finalized and completed after that process is complete, usually sometime in mid-December. That said, we do not anticipate any significant changes from these numbers. So jumping right into it, it goes without saying that this past year was kind of unlike any other that we've experienced. And that includes, in the world of municipal finance, a lot of different things going on. COVID-19 pandemic did impact our city finances. We had more funds going out the door for COVID-related programs and services, and also some revenues, corresponding revenues coming in for those as reimbursements were received. The pandemic also continued to drive an extremely robust housing market in the city with new growth and development having a huge impact on both revenues and expenditures. And then finally, on the flip side, we did have, continue to see some of our revenue streams continue to be negatively impacted over the course of the year by COVID. Primarily, the top three transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax that people pay when they stay at our hotels, stay at our hotels, continued to struggle throughout the fiscal year, although we did start to see a bit of an uptick the last four months of the fiscal year. Fines and forfeitures as a whole were down, fewer people out on the road, so fewer citations, parking citations, traffic citations, so on. And then finally, investment income as interest rates remain near historic lows. Jumping into general fund revenues and focusing specifically on taxes, we see that our property taxes starting off finished about one point one million above budget. Again, twenty twenty twenty-one was a, the second year of a two-year budget, so we did see higher rates of growth, new growth in the city throughout the two-year cycle, and also just increasing property values. Sales tax finished the year strong for the same reasons that I highlighted during the spring budget development process, the fact that people transitioned from their income from paying for services to paying to, for taxable goods during the pandemic. And in addition, people were purchasing large recreational, making large recreational purchases such as RVs and boats, both of which Rancho Cordova has in its city, as well as increase in online purchases, which resulted in the county pool distributing far more funds than we've ever seen before. As I mentioned, transient occupancy tax was a bit of a, was on the negative side. We saw that come in at just above two point seven million, which is slightly above the amended budget. We did start to see an uptick at the end of the fiscal year. However, if you look back just a few years, you'll see that, you know, where TOT was before the pandemic at four point three million, and that was before the opening of a new hotel. So we are still far below the levels that we saw pre-pandemic. And then finally, kind of rounding out, UUT, utility users' tax kind of tends to stay steady, hovering just above three point five million annually. And then the other taxes category came in a couple hundred thousand above budget. One roll-up in that category is the property transfer tax. This is the tax that people pay when a home sells, and we did see those, that revenue reach an all-time high, just kind of showing how strong the housing market is in Rancho Cordova. So taking a step back and just looking at general fund revenues by category, we already talked about taxes on the prior slide, and just kind of running down this list, franchise fees performed as expected. There was one late payment, which caused it to be slightly low. That's attributed to this fiscal year. Another category to highlight is licenses. Permit and fees came in about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars above budget, primarily driven by building permit revenues, extremely high levels of activity in the city. So we see a corresponding increase on the revenue side and a corresponding increase on the expenditure side with that activity. The next category, use of money in property. This is one that looks a little funny when you look at it because it's a negative. And just to explain, so the city is required to book a fair market value adjustment at the end of the fiscal year, and that represents basically, if the city were to liquidate its entire investment portfolio on that day, what would that look like? And so because we were in, at that point in time, a rising interest rate environment, the city would take a loss if that had been the case. However, that's not how we do our, handle our investments. We hold them all to maturity, and therefore it's just a book and tree. It is not a, a loss that we've actually experienced. Moving down, intergovernmental, you'll see that that is also quite high in comparison to the budget. This is where we see our COVID-related reimbursements. So primarily, like the Great Plates program, we expended just under three million dollars and saw about one point five million get reimbursed last year. So you're seeing that reflected in that number. So overall, our general fund revenues continued to perform well despite some of the uncertainty that we started off the fiscal year with because of COVID-nineteen and finished the year strong at sixty-four point three million. Moving to the expense side, city kind of performed as expected and is budgeted with a couple of notable exceptions. If you look down at the third category, operations, you'll see that, that category in particular finished about two million dollars above what the original budget was. Again, this is a direct COVID-nineteen impact. This is where our Great Plates program costs were housed, and as I mentioned earlier, just under three million dollars was expended by the city, or I should say fronted by the city for that program because we did receive reimbursement. The city paid six point two five percent. And then the other category that where we had some unbudgeted expenditures is in the capital outlay, and this is primarily for some land purchases that were made during the fiscal year. So even with these costs, the city ended the year with a general fund surplus of just around two point two million dollars. And also, one of the resolutions that's before you this evening is a proposed budget amendment that would increase both the revenue budget and the expenditure budget to, to be closer to the performance that you've seen this evening. Before I move on, are there any questions on general fund performance?
So you want to, what, what do you want to raise?
So the, the proposed budget amendment before you this evening would amend the budget to raise both the revenues to sixty-three point eight million and then expenditures to sixty-two million so that we have appropriate expenditure authority to cover the COVID-related costs of the Great Plates program and the land purchases.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Kim, how, how are you going to handle the CARES dollars that came through? I assume, have we already withdrawn the first tranche of that?
Well, so are you referring to the CARES Act dollars or the ARPA funding, two different tranches of funds?
So the, the dollars that were made available to us, I think in March of this year?
Okay. So the, there was, originally, there was the CARES Act funding, of which the city received about nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and we actually received those funds this fiscal year. So we spent the money last fiscal year in twenty twenty-one, but we did not receive the reimbursement until this year. And then.
Okay, that explains it.
And the more recent Rescue Act funds, we've received the first allocation. However, those are in a special revenue fund. They are not included in any of these numbers.
Okay, so CARES dollars have not been reflected in this fiscal year?
On the revenue side, correct.
That's in front of us.
That.
On the revenue side.
Yes.
So, but what we're, but what we're gonna be able to do going forward is reimburse ourselves, in essence, reimburse the general fund for some COVID-related expenditures.
Correct. There's just a mismatch.
But that would be covered in our... Would you go back and retroactively adjust the twenty twenty-one budget, or do we close that out and we do those adjustments going forward? How would you handle that?
Yeah, we, we are required because of the timing in which that revenue came in. It was required to be recorded in the current fiscal year, so we unfortunately cannot go back and match it with expenditures last year.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay. So then I'm gonna segue in to basically the topic that I know we've been talking about a little bit here and there, and I wanted to kind of revisit this, and it's the city reserve policy. Right now, the city reserve policy automatically appropriates any general fund surplus according to the formula that's shown at the top of this slide. So just for an example to walk you through, so fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one, the year-end surplus was about two point two million. So fifty percent of that goes to our capital facilities fund. So one point one million went to that. And just as a reminder, that fund is used, can be used to both purchase additional city capital facilities or also renovate major capital projects to any city facilities. The next twenty-five percent goes to the city's infrastructure fund, and this fund is typically programmed annually in the CIP budget by our Public Works Department and goes towards street and roads projects. And then finally, the remaining twenty-five percent stays in the general fund. And that was intended initially back in two thousand and ten eleven when this policy was first implemented. It was intended to grow and develop a general fund reserve. So, and kind of moving, I'm gonna bounce forward to the next slide, moving, what that created, what is referred to as the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. So that first line on this chart, the Economic Uncertainty Reserve, is really what we refer to as our general fund reserve. And that has been set at twenty percent of our general fund operating expenses. And basically, so this is to be used, there's some guidelines for how it would be used, but it's really for emergency situations or a major downturn, a disaster, something along those lines. And, you know, oftentimes I'll be asked, what's the magic number for a general fund reserve? And the answer is really, it depends. It's very unique to every city and agency. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that a city maintain a general fund reserve at minimum of fifteen percent of its general fund operating expenditures. So at twenty percent, we are above that. And some of the considerations that you factor in when you're thinking about what the appropriate level is, is you look at the diversity of your revenue stream. Are you, is this agency overly dependent on any single revenue source or type of industry? Does the city have any unfunded liabilities or major sources of debt that they need to consider? And are there any risk factors such as, you know, potential for an earthquake, flood, and so on? So those are some of the things to factor in when trying to determine the right level of general fund reserve. So at the end of the day, I, but based on our current finances, I would recommend that a twenty percent reserve is sufficient and where the city should maintain going forward. And then moving into the next line, the undesignated general fund balance. And so that twenty-five percent allocation of the surplus that you've seen, that you saw on the prior slide, once we fund our Economic Uncertainty Reserve, it basically goes into undesignated general fund balance, which has been growing over the past several years as we've had some general fund surpluses. During some internal conversations, internal planning conversations that staff has had, the thought has been that about twenty million dollars of that undesignated general fund balance could be used for the Mills Crossing Civic Center project. That's just, again, within preliminary conversations internally. However, one of the recommendations before you for consideration this evening is to officially designate and reserve twenty million dollars of that undesignated fund balance for that project. And then the other component of this that I wanted to highlight, there's another, a third recommendation, or a second recommendation for a allocation of just over a half million dollars from the undesignated general fund balance to the city's self-insurance fund, and that is being recommended so that the city can prepare to become what is called self-insured as we move forward and grow, and those premiums that we pay for insurance become increasingly difficult to, you know, fund on an annual basis. And so we're looking and starting to be prepared for that next step. So that is the two recommendations this, before you this evening with regards to allocating that undesignated general fund balance. And then jumping back, the third recommendation before you for consideration this evening is revising the existing, the current reserve policy so that fifty percent of the surplus going forward goes to the capital facilities fund and fifty percent would go to the infrastructure fund rather than continuing to fund the undesignated general fund balance. So I know that was a lot of numbers and stuff, talk about reserves and funds, so I'll stop there and see if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Before we go into that, let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment cards from those in the council chambers, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom or telephone.
Okay.
So I'm gonna start it off. I would like to see with that undesignated fund some actual land banking idea of using our revenue in a different way. The city, instead of going and, and using it towards that, I'd like to see a way that we take it and actually go and start to appropriate land that basically would help out the city. And then we, we use our savings fund and then show it in a certain way. So I think we need to be a little bit more creative with our, it's still a savings, it's still an account, it's still a way to put our money, but I don't really want to see it going a hundred percent towards the, the, the new civic area, but I would like to see some of that funding going towards buying up properties and using it as a land bank that then we're able to do stuff with. I'm gonna flip over, and so if we're going to do something like that, I'd like to maybe suggest even another accommodation where we're going to use some of it in a way that would find a different, more creative way of saving our money and putting into something that's really gonna benefit the citizens, in my mind. Because it, not only does it, is it still a savings because we're buying up the property, property in the city is, is increasing in value, and so that would be a good use of our line, or our money. So, all right. David, what do you think?
I think we do need a, a determined policy towards land banking. That's gotta be a priority. We've seen along Folsom Boulevard, for example, that development is gonna be stymied by all the barriers that are placed in front of, of urbanized development in that area. To touch a building there, you've got to deal with ADA issues. You've got to deal with a site that probably needs drainage improvements and electrical upgrades and sewer upgrades and water upgrades, and has a whole bunch of state mandates dumped down on it. It makes it very difficult to do infill development with respect to greenfields. So one way to allow that to happen and to assist it is for us to, to acquire property. So that, that's gotta be a strategy going forward. Our whole development now at, at the Mills Mather center area, that wouldn't be possible unless we controlled the land because we were non-controlled land for almost twenty years, well, fifteen, fifteen years of our existence, and we're able to facilitate very little there. So control of land is, is gonna be necessary. You know, that's been advice from successful cities for, for decades to us, that we need to be able to control our own land. So I, I agree with you there, Mr. R. The question is the source of that. Clearly, we've already committed, I think, this twenty million to the Mills Crossing. This is just sort of recognizing that. So I think that priority has to be one that we use going forward. Every year, because we are so fiscally responsible as a city, we generate these surpluses. It's done out of caution. It's done because we're efficient in what we do, and it's done because of our really good management. Thank you, Cyrus, and, and Kim, and everybody else for your, for your diligence on this. But that gives us the opportunity to invest in property for future development and civic facilities for which we've got a fifty-year debt to sort of, to repay. If you think about, in the older part of town in particular, every old park is failing in some way. All of our old school sites have challenges. Now, there's a park district and a school district, but all the facilities around those also need work, you know, where I think we're gonna hear some proposals for drainage in the near future and upgrading our, our drainage capacity, which may have been highlighted by the record rains of last weekend. So there's, there's an enormous need for, for civic investment, particularly on the older side of town. And, and this is where some of those dollars come from, those surpluses we have every year. So I'm in favor of what the staff has recommended in that, in that context.
So is that number three?
Yeah.
Yeah, number three, right?
Yeah, I think, Mr. May, if I may, the idea of land banking has always been something that we have favored and we've, we've tried to do, we've tried to be strategic and thoughtful about acquisition of land. And I can think that in the last few years, we have acquired five properties. So, so we will continue doing so. I think the, the idea was of designating some of our undesignated funds for the, the Mills Crossing project. We've already committed to that project. We're moving forward, and we have the, the funds that we need to set aside to complete those projects. But we have, we do have other resources in the way of funding from other opportunities. So we are, so I think that opportunity will always be in front of us. And, and if we find something that we have to dip into... In, and, and if we find something that we have to dip into some of, or other undesignated funds, we would recommend to do so. But overall, I think the message is that we have been great stewards of the funds and we will continue doing so. We are in discussions with, and we are in exploration process with some additional properties that we hope to bring to you in the near future. So, so that will certainly be, is something that we are taking into account.
Do you think, one, I was going to ask, on our sheets, does that show as savings? If we started buying properties and it would echo into savings and show that, like a, or would it not? How would you show that on our budget overall?
Well, it's shown on our financial statements as an asset. So it's, it's a long-term asset.
So it is a long-term asset, okay. Do we, and just, I'm just asking, do we have crypto anywhere in our portfolio?
No, we do not.
No, that's not, that's not an area that we, we probably would not fit the definition of safe investment for the community.
Yeah, Kim is going to lose her good, her good steward award every year from the National Council Organization.
I'm just saying, a little bit of crypto never hurt nobody.
Remember, remember Orange County under Citron.
Who and who?
And remember Squid Games Crypto just came out today, Winter Zero.
Squid Games Crypto, okay. All right, so recommendation three is where David sat. Linda, where do you sit?
All three, actually. The three separate recommendations, I think we can endorse all three.
Are they, are they three separate or?
Three separate ones, all are.
Oh, okay. So one is we're 2020 million and we're going to put towards the Civic Center. We're going to reallocate 500,000 towards the general fund. And then we're going to consider revising the allocation beginning of 2020 and 50% capital and 50% infrastructure fund. And then what would be my, what would be the fund for, you know, purchases and stuff like that? Would, would you consider that the infrastructure fund?
Yeah, I think it's, we have a variety of resources. We also have our, some of our measure R funds that we can use because that is set aside or designated as economic recovery. So if there is a good reason justification to use some of those funds to, to acquire property, we would do so.
Okay.
We do have flexibility.
Do we need, do, do I need to set a policy for us and bring the council and be like, we want this much in land banking or not really?
I'm, I think it, most, most of the time, our property acquisitions have been opportunity-driven.
Right.
So my, my recommendation is not to box ourselves in. If there is a good investment to be made, we will certainly recommend it to the council.
All right. Kim, make sure to just put it on, I am looking for that kind of thing. Like, I do think that it's great that we're great stewards, but I also want to understand that, you know, money isn't always just the capital you put in the bank. Let's also look toward the properties. And every time we do this, we get a little bit more aggressive fixing up Folsom Boulevard as we go down that line. And there's other properties in Rancho, if we can scoop them up and help them to generate new revenues for our citizens, that's, that's amazing. So it's a twofer usually. Linda, what do you think?
Yeah, Garrett, you asked me. So at number one, it is important that we satisfy the money necessary to complete, complete the Civic Center project. We do not want to be guilty of, like a landowner, having a site for an unbuilt shopping center for years and years and years. It's, we've got a design, but we need to move forward with that. I am also a strong fan, not necessarily of land banking for the purpose of buying up land, but for specific targeted uses. And Cyrus and his staff are very well aware of the two properties in Rancho Cordova that I think are really critical for us to own and to have control of. Having worked in insurance, I do believe in establishing a self-insurance fund. But given that, as a planner married to an engineer, I also have a strong commitment to infrastructure. And I do believe that infrastructure includes not just hard infrastructure on the ground, but also broadband. We have seen in these last 18 months, better than ever before, how critical having everybody with consistent access to broadband is important. Not just, not just with the challenges we've had in the last 18 months, but in order to have an educated, educated population that is able to communicate in today's environment. Those are my comments.
So where, where do you fall with one, two, and three? You're good?
I'm good with one, two, and three.
Excellent.
As long as it considers buying my two favorite pieces of property. Thank you very much.
She just said yes to land banking. All right, next one, Siri, what do you think?
We're not going to identify them, not.
No, no, absolutely not.
The price will go up.
You betcha, Cyrus knows.
So myself, Mayor, I think the points that I wanted to cover have been covered by, actually, all three of you. So yeah, I'm in favor of recommendation one, two, and three.
All right, Kim, so you've got full recommendations. Let's see, do we need to take in order?
We should do a roll call. I'm reading, I got it, thank you, okay.
All right, can I go ahead and ask for a motion, guys?
Siri, make a motion.
Siri, this is yours.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the city reserve policy discussion.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Okay.
Second.
That was great, Siri. Roll call.
Councilmember Pulipatti.
Yes.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry.
He'll be out.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye. And I'm very excited to hear Siri's first motion in council. It's very exciting, Siri. We'll write that down. All right.
If I, if I may, we have a second resolution as well for the budget amendment, the proposed budget amendment.
No, I'm not interested in that one. We have to do another one? All right, can I have a second? Can I ask for another motion, please? For which one?
We're not looking at, we're not looking at something. Kim, do you want to change just her name?
Oh, I know.
I apologize, I don't have it in front, I don't have it up on a slide. But there is a second resolution to adopt a budget amendment for fiscal year 2021 to make the adjustments for the covid expenses and the land purchases.
Okay.
So moved.
Second, roll call.
You're the second?
I am.
Thank you. Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipatti.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry is, he, he's absent?
He's absent.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye. All right, thank you, good job. I don't know what piece of property those are, but I think we're going to need to buy those. All right. Any future agenda items, guys? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead, close this, during this meeting to close session.
In memory of Stanley Flood.
In memory of Mr. Flood. What was his first name?
Thank you.
Linda?
Stanley.
Memory of Stanley Flood.
Stanley.